So I'm calling the Select Board meeting to order on Tuesday, June the 18th, 2024, at 6:30 PM. So we always start off with public comment. We do it at the first and the end of the meeting. Public comment is for comments from the public that are not related to the agenda. We will not respond because whatever you say is not on the agenda, but we will listen and take them into account. So do we have any public comment to start out with? Ms. Houlihan?
Hi, Marnie Houlihan, 26 Clifford Road. And I am making a statement on behalf of the Planning Board just to let the public know that last night we did come to a consensus to promote two properties for the MBTA Community Bylaw that will be in the special town meeting. So I would encourage the public that's listening to this meeting to watch the recording from last night so they have an appreciation for what the Planning Board is moving forward with after mapping session that was held on June 3rd.
I wish we could ask a question. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Ms. Brascio?
Thank you. Lisa Brascio, 13 Oregon Road. Just a comment for the board. I know we're coming to the end of the fiscal year, and I know the volunteer appreciation breakfast hasn't taken place. I know I talked to Vanessa about it, and she's working on it. But I would hope before the end of the year, the fiscal year, because the funds were, you know, I advocated for those funds at the town meeting. So I would hope that, you know, we could continue that tradition. I think it's a great way to thank the volunteers for everything they do, and I'm sure you'll continue it, but I just wanted to say I hope that it can be done before the fiscal year runs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom? No Zoom?
Can I just ask a quick question? This is administrative. I don't know if it's just me. I'm trying to get into the Zoom right now and I'm not able to. So I just want to confirm that somebody else is in there and it's a me issue and not a bigger issue.
I see Marguerite.
Yeah, there's seven attendees.
Okay, so it's a me issue. Cool. Thank you. Anything else? We've got two. Okay, we've got two public hearings we need to get started with. So we're going to start off with a public hearing to move a business from one location to the other. Come on up, Justin.
Let me read the...
Yes, Mr. Purple?
Southborough Select Board should hold a public hearing Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, 6:30 PM. The call of hearing room, 17 Common Street, Southborough, to consider an application from EJ Automotive LLC for a Class II used car dealer's license to be located at 179 Boston Road in Southborough. The public hearing may be viewed or listened to by the public through a link located at All interested parties are encouraged to view and/or participate.
Thank you. Welcome, Justin.
Thank you.
So you want to explain to us what you're trying to do?
Yeah, so right now we're at 145 Boston Road. We're looking to move it down about three buildings. We're trying to combine all my businesses into one location. So we're going to bring everything from Marlboro to Southborough, and we figure we're going to use Kyle Law and the repair shop over there also. It'll be a little bit manage a lot easier.
So you're trying to move the license from 145 to 179. That's the purpose of this?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we applaud you for trying to bring more business to Southborough, so please continue to do that. So thank you very much. So it's the old Riverside location, and they've moved to Ashland, I think?
Hopkinton.
Hopkinton?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? So nothing's really changed, and he's got a license for up to 12 used cars, so that will stay.
So this was the former Stapleton location?
Where we are now.
Now. And you're bringing more business from Marlboro into the new location?
Correct. So we own Jay and Jay &amp; Son, Great Lawns Plus, you know, a lot of trucks.
Okay, good.
We feel it'd be a lot easier to run everything out of one location instead of, right now we have three.
Good. Sounds great.
Yeah.
Is this your son next to you?
It is. This is my son Ethan.
Hello, Ethan.
For EJ, Ethan and Justin.
Al, any questions?
No, I think I got an idea where it is because I drive by it every day.
You're gonna love this here.
It's a good location for this.
Right.
Andrew?
I don't have any questions.
All right. Is there any questions from the public? Vanessa, anything online? All right, so this one's pretty simple. So can Samuel make a motion to close the hearing?
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
So Marguerite?
Yeah.
I remembered.
I'll do a roll call, I guess.
Marguerite is on Zoom with us, and I'm very glad to see you, Marguerite.
Do we just want to present a comment from the public?
I did that.
Okay.
I did that. Okay, so Marguerite's on Zoom, so all of her votes tonight, and don't let me forget, are going to be roll call votes. So, Marguerite?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Cook is aye. So five is the order to close the public hearing. Okay, so now, Sam, can you make a motion to approve the transfer of the license from 145 to 179 Boston Road, subject to the approval of the police, fire, and building departments?
And with ours as in the application?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Marguerite?
Aye.
She said yes?
Yes.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Aye.
Cook is zero, five zero. So congratulations, and thank you for staying.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, so the next public hearing is a tree hearing. It's not scheduled seven o'clock, so we're going to fill in until we get to seven o'clock with something that I think the Planning Board will be interested in since they're all here. Mimi, where are you? Have you, what time did you post your meeting for?
Since 30, but the hearing starts at 30.
Do you want to go ahead and call your meeting to order because you may want to comment on? We're going to talk about the schedule for the special town meeting.
Oh, sure.
The Planning, the Planning Board is now in session, and I believe we have Jesse Stein on Zoom.
He is in the, he's in the audience, yes.
He's, is there?
Yes, he is.
So do we need to do a roll call to come into session since he's on Zoom? Probably. So we can bring Jesse over so he can at least participate in that. So Latrell here? Brascio here.
Damiaria here.
See there? Jesse, are you there?
There.
There he is.
There he comes.
So Jesse, can you hear me?
Still muted.
Jesse, we just need to do a roll call to call the Board into session, so if you can just say "here." Well, you've got four out of five, so you're, you're okay. I don't think he, I don't know that he hears.
He unmuted briefly and then muted again.
He did.
He unmuted for a second?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, now he's unmuted.
There he is. Unmuted again.
I can't hear you, Jesse. So Jesse, if you can hear us, you may want to reboot.
So we have four.
You've got four, so you're in. Okay. All right, so let's keep going. We've got a lot on the agenda tonight. Okay. Now he's got his hand up, so... So go ahead, Jesse, if you can hear us.
He's unmuted, but can't hear him.
Okay, all right, so good enough.
That means yes.
All right, so as everyone knows, we've been planning on having a special town meeting for quite a while. There's several things that we think are going to be on the warrant, including especially the proposal by the Planning Board for the compliance with the MBTA Act. We also had quite a few comments after this last town meeting as far as logistics. We had people, we only had a hundred or so people at the town meeting, which was unfortunate. So we did a survey recently to try to understand what nights people might want to do the special town meeting. We had 200 responses, so pretty good responses, and it came back with a pretty clear answer as far as what nights. We gave people four choices. So September 23rd, September 24th for the two-night Monday, Tuesday, then the following weekend, and then the following Monday, Tuesday, and then the following weekend. That last weekend is Yonka Porso doesn't work, so there was really three that were viable. So the two Monday, Tuesday combos were the ones that got the most votes. They were pretty close with the 23rd, 24th getting a few more votes than the September 30th, October 1st, but pretty close. So those are the two that we're probably going to consider tonight, but we wanted to make sure the Planning Board had a chance to weigh in on this, given that the MBTA article is probably going to be the centerpiece of town meeting. So last night, I actually, so Mimi, did we, so I can't, did we talk about it last night? So we've talked about it, and I believe that your preference is that second Monday, Tuesday?
That's mine, but I...
So you want to talk, so feel free to.
It's the first one. The reason it's...
And for the record, Rosh Hashanah is October 2nd, so we're not interfering with Rosh Hashanah. So our preference is the 30th, just because we would like to get the bylaw in the maps to the state to have them do a pre-adoption review. We still need to hopefully reconnect with Boulder and have them run the compliance model fully and give us all the maps and everything we need to go to the state, so we're, we're, the more time, the better, because the state wants 90 days, although the state said they would be flexible. I don't know how much flexibility they'll have. So you've got a little bit over 90 days right now? Yeah. If you do the, okay, so what does the Select Board think about picking the second date, which was pretty much tied for the most popular choice?
Are you talking about September 30th?
Yep. And October 1st as the backup?
Yeah, I'm in favor. By, by backup, you mean if it...
Goes to two nights?
Yes.
So seven to 11 on the 30th, and then seven to 11 on the 1st. Rosh Hashanah is the second.
I, I support that.
I'm indifferent. I prefer the Monday, Tuesday, so either one is fine, so 30th is fine.
Yeah, I'm good.
Marguerite?
I'm fine with either one.
All right, so I think in deference to the Planning Board, given how important their article is going to be to the town, we should support what they want, which is September 30th, October 1st. We know Trotter is available, so we're all set as far as logistics goes, so I'd say let's get it set so that we've got a target and we know what we're shooting for. Okay? All right, so Andrew, you want to make a motion?
I move that the fall 2024 town meeting be held on Monday, September 30th at 6:00 PM, and continuing on to Tuesday, October 1st if needed.
Second.
Roll call vote, Marguerite?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Kathy's aye, five zero. All right. Paul Semino wanted everybody to know that he would have been here if he were here, but he is out of town, given we're talking about town meeting date, but he is fine with this date too, so we have checked with him. So just to reiterate what the survey asked, they asked four questions. How likely are you to attend a fall 2024 town meeting if it were to be scheduled on each of the following dates? We just talked about the four dates. Second question was, what factors are most important to you when deciding whether to attend the town meeting? Select all that apply. So the one that won that one is date and time. So date and time is crucial to the decision to come. Second one was topics to be discussed. Third was length of the meeting. So those were by far the three things that are most important to people when deciding whether to come or not. Third question, do you believe town meetings are an effective way to participate in local governance? The answer was pretty split here. Yes, very effective, somewhat effective. So the two of those combined, 59%. Neutral was seven, and then 22 and 11, 33% said either not very effective or not effective at all. So about a third said no, and about two-thirds said some form of yes. Then the fourth question was a subjective question, and we got lots of answers, so I'm not going to read all those, but they were interesting as far as that question, which was, what improvements of any would you suggest for the town meeting process? We got some cute ones. A couple of people said they're leaving town. One said, quit talking so much. So they, they, they were all interesting. But Matt Probst of the Municipal Technology Committee, who ran the survey for us very graciously, kind of summed up where the five comments came from, where most comments came from for that one. So one of them was to vote remotely, and that's just not an issue right now. We just don't have the technology to do it. There's a lot of pitfalls in trying to do that, so it may get here one of these days, but we're not close to being able to, to do that one, so that one's no good. The second one was to cut speaking time down even more. Don't let people repeat themselves. If someone's already said something, don't let people get up and ditto it. We've heard that, that's enough, so that was the second one. The third one was to cut out all of the pre-stuff. No reports, no anything, just get started right at the time that we said town meeting, so to cut down the time too. Fourth one was to consider some type of childcare, or at least a place where someone could bring a child if they needed to and still participate, talk at the mic, et cetera. And then, I don't remember the fifth one, but there was a fifth one too, so anyway, so they were interesting. This has been posted, if you want to read the comments, but 200 is a lot, I guess. I hope everybody here did it. So we've got that set, and hopefully Planning Board's got enough time to get your, your advice from the state and get your report rerun.
Kathy? I'd comment on the remote voting. Town Clerk has actually been very interested in that. The challenge there is the Secretary of State basically flatly says no on that one for a variety of reasons. So a lot of people want to do that, but I guess there are concerns about security or something, I don't know, but we really can't do it unilaterally. We've got to work with the state on that typically, and the answer has been a strong no so far.
Okay, so any questions on the survey? All right. Okay, so now, let's talk about what we think is going to be on the warrant, and of course this is going to change as we get closer to it, but we at least have an idea of what's on it at this point. So Mr. Purple put together a list for us, and I added a couple of things to it. So number one, the zoning change to comply with the MBTA communities requirements, that will probably be the centerpiece and draw the most attention, I would think, if I had to guess. Second is the implementation of the results of the Public Safety Staffing Study that was authorized at town meeting, where we are looking at the appropriateness of both our police department and fire department, especially whether we need a deputy fire chief. So that we expect to have back soon, and that may require a proposal to change the police and our fire budget for special town meeting. Feedback for a regional emergency communications center proposal. So we're getting closer and closer to getting to the point we think we have a proposal. We promised town meeting we'd bring it back and get their feedback, so that, we expect to be there. Right, Mr. Hamilton? Yeah?
Yep.
All right, funding. As everybody knows, we have investigated building some affordable housing on a plot of land the town owns on Atwood, and have found that we've got a lead issue there because of the water tank that was there, so we may have to request funding to do the cleanup for that property. Unfortunately, we also have a similar problem with our Breakneck Hill cleanup. We had authorized a bond to do that. We thought we had plenty of money. Turns out, there's a lot more asbestos in the property than we thought. Cleanup is going to cost a lot more, so we may have to ask for more money to finish that job. We're waiting for that process to play out. Advisory Committee has asked for a while now to consider increasing CPA church, surcharge from 3%, 1% to 3%. That can happen one of two ways. You either go through town meeting to get it to the ballot. It's got to end up on the ballot no matter what. So you either go through town meeting to get approval to put it on the ballot, or you get enough signatures to go directly to the ballot. So TBD as to, to where that one goes. It's not a Select Board, it's not a Select Board mandate to do that. That is basically the voters that decide and just has to get to the ballot one of those two ways. We've been talking for quite a while about restructuring the Affordable House Trust Committee and CHOPSE to try to be more effective with affordable housing. We've talked about that for, what, a year, year and three, four months? Lisa was on Select Board when we first started talking about that. So that, we're going to talk about our goals later on that we set last week, and that's one of our goals, is to absolutely do that and get that done soon, and therefore then bring whatever has to happen to town meeting to affect it. There's amendments probably to the SAP Personnel Bylaw that usually happens every town meeting. Those would be expected. There's a possibility that there'll be a proposal to change the date of the annual town meeting from what it is now. Right now, it is required to be no later than the last Saturday in March. It's part of the restructuring of the Affordable House Trust Fund and CHOPSE. We want to deal with being able to possibly transfer the funds that are in the, funded by the CPA for community housing directly to the Affordable House Trust Fund. That's a separate issue from putting this new group together, but we do want that to be part of the consideration in the end. And then possibly a Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Stormwater Enterprise Fund are used by a lot of towns to, to fund stormwater infrastructure improvements, et cetera. The denominator used for that is all property in the town, not just taxable property, so you'd have a bigger tax base to spread it over, and therefore hopefully start reducing taxable property taxes a little bit. So advisory again is looking at that. They've run some numbers, and TBD whether we go forward with that now or postpone that to a later date. A couple more things that are more ministerial. We've got some committees we want to make some changes to. The Pilot Committee that was formed a couple years ago from a citizen petition. The chair of that has requested that be reduced from seven to five. That's a bylaw, so that's going to have to be done through town meeting. The Scholarship Committee is seven members. I have, I don't know if that one is bylaw or whether it's not, but whatever it is, I've talked to both the past chair, Isabel Murphy, and to the current chair, Lisa Brascio, and they agree. They've got two vacancies, so if we reduce it from seven to five, they'd have a full committee. They're on board with that one. Again, this is our effort to try to make these committees more efficient and more effective and reduce some of the numbers. There's two that are just old and moribund that we wanted to eliminate. One is the famous Solid Waste Disposal Committee, which I don't think anybody knows much about, nor the, anybody want to be on that one?
Or what's that about?
The Consumer Advisory Commission. So neither one of these have been active for decades in a couple cases, so we wanted to take a chance or take the opportunity to get rid of those two, to, again, trying to reduce the number of committees. You know, and keeping the stuff on the website takes up space and costs money too, so that's another good reason to try to get some of this stuff reduced. All right, any questions? All right, we've got five more minutes. So Travis, why don't you come on up, and I think we can probably talk to you and still stay on schedule. Is Jen Hansen, there she is. So Jen, you want to come on up too? And you want to introduce Travis to us?
Sure. So this is Travis Farley, if I got that correct? So he is our finalist for candidate for the Recreation Director. So we've, we've met with him. He's met with several people within the town, different departments. I personally have had a lot of conversations with him, and we're really excited about the excitement that we feel he can bring to the department. We feel passionately that Tim did a great job taking our department and building it up, and really building a brand for our department as well, and really excited about the passion that kind of oozes out of Travis, and I, we've been joking that he bleeds rec, right? Like, it's his thing, he's super excited, and really excited to have someone be able to take what Tim built and really grow it for us and take it to the next level and bring new ideas and stuff like that. So, meet Travis.
Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Travis. You want to tell us something about yourself? We've got your resume, so...
I actually grew up in the rec world. My dad was the Assistant Rec Director in the town I grew up in, so I actually grew up lining fields, taking registrations, all that fun stuff, working summer camps when I was a kid. Sorry, my apologies. And I actually started out in working in college athletics, as you see in my resume, and I, I missed the calling of recreation and being part of a community and really making a difference, and that's where I've been since. And yeah, I'm really looking forward to the opportunity, hitting the ground running, and, and like Jen said, building off of the success that Tim's had, and then bringing the excitement and hitting the ground running here in Southborough.
So Jen, as my understanding, the interview committee has unanimously recommended Travis for appointment?
Yep, and all feedback from everyone else that he interviewed with as well, so...
You've got quite a background with your resume as far as the things you've done. It's truly interesting. So Al, any questions for Travis before we go to...
No questions.
Thank you.
Sam?
I know I've reviewed the resume material, very impressive, and delighted to have you on board, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
So I told you it's going to be easy. Andrew?
Travis, fully support your appointment here and look forward to, I think Jen put it really well, you know, building off of kind of the next step of what Tim, I think, did a, a great job, and I'm excited about kind of taking rec to the next level.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm excited too.
Marguerite?
No questions, just welcome to Southborough.
Hey Kathy, I actually do have one question. Do you have any secret strategy for reducing pickleball court noise?
Believe me, if I had that secret, I think I would have, I'd be a rich man right now, because I think there's a lot of communities that are struggling with that. It's not really a struggle, it's just, it's grown so much in popularity so fast. A lot of communities are struggling with where to put courts next to neighborhoods and, and battling with that same issue, but looking forward to tackling that issue here in Southborough too.
All right, so I'm just going to show my 90s. I don't play pickleball. Why is it noisy?
The ball and the racket.
It's a whack noise.
It's a, it's a plastic one. I was, I was hoping I could make it through a meeting without discussing pickleball, but...
Sorry.
I'm just kidding. It's the hot, I'm just, I'm just kidding. It's the hot topic in recreation right now. It's a, it's a very popular sport, and it's grown very fast.
All ages too.
All ages. It's, uh, most, started out mostly seniors, and now it literally is all ages that are playing, which is great.
That's great. So I think, I agree with Jen, you're walking into a very good situation. We had a very good, your predecessor was a good guy, got things rolling, got things, a lot of projects wrapped up and done. He inherited a lot of projects when he came here and got them all done. I can remember the meeting when he came and said, they're done, and they were. So you're in a building, you're an old historical building with another department that I think you'll like a lot too, so I think that would be great. You've got an excellent program coordinator that we know well, so I think you'll enjoy that. So I think you're walking into a really nice situation.
Thank you. Yeah, and Tim's got a wonderful reputation. I know Tim through the MRPA. I actually just wrapped up my, last year, my four-year term as Vice President, President -elect and President, and Vice President, it's a four-year cycle through the Mass Rec and Park Association. Tim's currently the treasurer of that organization. It's a great organization, so we, we have a lot of ties back and forth, and we've had a lot of communication. He's a great guy and he's got nothing but wonderful things to say about Southborough.
All right, so when is your start date?
I'm shooting for early July. I'm hoping maybe Monday, July 1st, I think, is our second. Going to try to get in as quick as I can, because I know I want to help out and just dive in.
And camps start, I think, July 24, or June 24?
24, yeah.
Yeah, they're coming, so I'm sure Christina is going to be very happy to see you start.
Yes. And I'd like to thank Mark and Vanessa and our commission as well. Through this whole process, they've been fantastic. And yeah, I just want to thank them very much for giving me this opportunity as well.
All right. You'll get to know them better. All right, so Andrew, you want to make a motion?
I move that we appoint Travis Farley as Recreation Director.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Marguerite?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And Cook is aye, so 5-0, so welcome to Southborough.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. So Mimi, it's 30 seconds to 7 o'clock, so I think you guys can come on up. And there should be enough chairs for you at the end, but one of them is going to be the straightback chair, sorry. Actually, you won't need the straightback chair. Jesse's coming via Zoom, so never mind. So you can push that straightback chair away. So we still don't see Jesse?
No, he's online, visible.
So Jesse, can you...
Hey, Kathy.
You can hear us? Good.
Yep.
So Mark, you want to open the hearing? Wait a minute, hold on a second. They've got to get their name tags straight. They don't know who they are. They've gotten it all mixed up. Mimi, you ready? Okay, Mark. Have you got the hearing notice, Mimi? We've got to read it. Vanessa, can you pull it up?
I've got it here, Mimi. Kathy, I've got it here.
You've got it there?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Want me to read it?
Okay, go ahead, Sam.
Southborough Select Board shall hold a public hearing on, oops, wrong one. Sorry. No, I don't have it, sorry.
Can I? Marnie's got it? So either, Mimi, Marnie?
The Southborough Tree Warden under the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 87, Section 3, and the Southborough Planning Board under the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 15(c), will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. at the Southborough Townhouse, McAuliffe Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, and via Zoom to discuss the removal... Oh, I think 20 Woodbury is first. Is that there? Hopefully it just says to discuss the removal of three trees at 20... This is the DPW one?
That was a legal ad.
Yeah, there should be two.
That's all that's in our Dropbox.
Oh. False alarm. You don't have it?
Yeah.
Who's got it?
Sure.
Grant?
Thanks, Marnie.
So you know we're looking for the one for the three trees?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Grant. To discuss the removal of three trees, one Pignut Hickory, 20 DBH, one Red Oak, 24 DBH, and one Eastern White Pine, 20 DBH located at 20 Woodbury Road. The meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting via remote participation and in person. Those who wish to watch or participate remotely may do so by accessing the meeting link at southboroughmass.gov-six-seven-four-virtual-meetings. The application can be viewed in person at the Planning Board, at the Southborough Townhouse, or at the Planning Board's website. Any portion wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Christopher Leroy, Tree Warden Designee.
Thank you. Thank you, Grant.
Thank you.
So Vanessa, is Mr. Chen in the Zoom audience? So can you bring him over?
Let's steal your agenda. Andrew, can?
Mr. Chen, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. How's everybody doing?
Welcome. So to tee this up, we've got Mr. Chris Leroy from the DPW with us, who is the Select Board's Tree Warden Designee. Select Board is the Tree Warden, and Chris is our Designee, so he is here. The Planning Board is here. This is a joint hearing because these trees that we're going to hear tonight are all on scenic roads. So Mimi, I would like to turn over this to you at this point, if it's okay with you.
Chris, do you want to speak to those, or...
I looked at all three, found no issue with any of the trees as far as safety or health.
Okay.
My findings. Also, Cliff Templeman, who we use as an arborist, looked at them as well. Same finding.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, would you like to speak to why you would like to have these trees removed?
Because two of the trees are very close to the driveway, and my driveway is in a slope. And during the wintertime, and when driving and going out, and sometimes we have to back in and or back out, and there's a concern of safety that the vehicle could hit the trees by accident. And because of the slope, it's, I would say, probably a 30-degree angle or to 35-degree angle. So it's a little harder during the snow days for the car. And I have to park one or two of my car on the driveway. And then the third tree that I put in my application is the tree that has one of the trunk that actually, so in substrate could fall on the house. And this house was, the attic, I think it was accidentally hit by the branch of a tree before. During the inspection, I think it was last year when I purchased this property.
Okay. And you said two were by the driveway?
That's correct.
I thought one was kind of behind the stone wall.
One is at the street a little bit.
Yeah, one's right down at the end. I didn't think the one near by the stone wall was that close to the driveway. No. Well, he drove, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chen. Ms. Willoughby? Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot about you, Jesse. Jesse, Mr. Stein.
So, Chris, I mean, what's, actually, I kind of want to hear from Chris, like, his response to the application. Do you agree that this is a legitimate safety concern for the residents?
I can't really speak to the safety concerns of backing down the driveway during snow. All I can speak to is the fact that the tree is in good health, the one that's right in, basically at the end of the driveway. I would assume that's the one of the biggest concern to the resident, but it is in good health, so that's all I can really say.
I think I want to hear from the rest of the board. Thanks, Mimi.
Okay, Ms. Willoughby?
Hi. Thank you both for coming. So in looking at this and then driving by, I think Woodbury Road is a very busy road. When I look at the pictures, and I recognize all trees are healthy. We're a tree city. They fall in the public shade tree domain. So while I would support keeping all three, I do see number one is causing some challenges. And as a homeowner, I think it's so close to the driveway and knowing the, some of the challenges anybody living off of Woodbury would face, I do think it would have a hindrance based on the photos that were submitted by Mr. Chen. So I would support removal of number one, but retaining number two and three.
Ms. Demaria?
I don't support removal of the trees. I agree with Mr. Leroy. I think a lot of us in town have the same sort of issue with trees that have grown very large that were maybe even intentionally planted and are now encroaching on driveways, and we have to be careful. But the tree is healthy, and in general, I don't think that public shade trees should be removed unless there's detriment.
Ms. Brascio?
So I'm definitely in support of keeping tree two and three. I understand the concern for one, so I'm more open on that to consider taking that down.
So just to be clear, if it's voted to take down, that would be the responsibility of Mr. Chen. Is that correct? Yes.
Can you explain why that is?
Because these are being removed not for a public reason, but for a private reason.
Okay, so even though they're in the public right-of-way, if we agree to take down that one, we let that one happen. He asked for it. It's not dead. It's not... We don't think it's a hazard, so he will pay for it.
I understand the concern with number one, but I'm not in agreement with taking down healthy public shade trees. And we're a tree city. There are lots of driveways with trees near them and narrow roads with trees lining them. So I would be in favor of following the recommendation of the Tree Warden Designee and the arborist. Mr. Stein?
So I think I'm going to go with allowing the resident to remove tree number one and not the second and third trees. Along the lines of what Marnie and Lisa had advocated.
Okay. Should we, do you want us to take a vote before you talk, or do you want to talk?
Yeah, let's just explain that each board has to take their own vote. You've got to have a majority vote of both boards for the tree removal to be approved. So why don't you go ahead and do your vote, then we'll discuss.
Marnie, do you mind making the motion?
Sure. So I make... I make a motion to remove tree number one at 20 Woodbury Road. I think that's it.
Second.
So you have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, yeah, the discussion would be that it's, just maybe change the motion to allow the resident to remove the tree.
So moved. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, no?
Willoughby, yes. Oh, sorry, Jesse.
Do a roll call for me.
We are. Willoughby, yes.
Demaria, no.
Brascio, yes.
So the Planning Board has voted to allow the removal of tree number one in the second motion?
The Planning Board moves to allow... No. Retain. So the Planning Board moves to retain trees indicated as number two and three on 20 Woodbury Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Willoughby, yes.
Demaria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Back to you.
So Mr. Kandev's got his hand up, so let's bring him over and see what he'd like us to hear. Hey, Bill, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I assume you can hear me?
Yes.
Great. I was going to just make a point to say we want to make sure that the applicant hires a company that has the appropriate surety to work within the public right-of-way that we require of all other contracts for work in the right-of-way.
Is that something that we would put in a decision?
I would think so.
Okay.
I think that's, given that, I think this Select Board can simply make that a condition.
Can we do our vote? So Planning Board's happy with one, two, and three? So Marnie, you saw the driveway. Why is one any different than two as far as your concern? They both look like they're...
Yeah, so two is actually up a hill a little bit more, and it's situated a little, at least, you know, based on the visual of the picture and what I recall, it's probably a good, like, five feet away from the driveway, whereas number one is located closer to the road. It's right on the edge of the driveway, and it could be an interference. I didn't pull into the driveway to pull out, but it could be an interference. And if we think about just, I mean, we didn't have a serious weather challenge this past year with snow, but if we think about snow buildup and how that works, it gives very little room because there's such a tree, there's such a large tree trunk there. I would, I guess I'm in favor of the home developer, the homeowner, just because it seems that it would interfere with the way, obstructing visual for them to get in and out of their driveway.
I don't think there's a sight issue there. I looked at it, too. So I can see around tree number one myself, so.
Okay, so Al, what do you think about one, two, and three?
Mike? I think, given that the Planning Board has moved to remove, to authorize the removal of number one, the other two are effectively moot. And so I think I would be in favor of making a motion to permit the removal of number one.
Everybody agree with that? So...
Nope.
Planning Board's, okay, hold on a second. The Planning Board's already voted no for two and three. We've got to have a positive vote from both boards to remove a tree. They've already said no to two and three, so if we voted yes, it's still not going to be removed. So, okay, now, why nope?
I'm no on any of them, actually.
Oh, okay. All right, so you don't support removing one?
I don't support removing, I guess I'm against removing trees for convenience. And I'd point out those trees were there long before Mr. Chen moved in. So he obviously could see that. And, you know, I looked at the sight lines. I think that, you know, certainly there is always risk when somebody has a sloped driveway, that you've got to be careful in the wintertime. But I guess I'm not sympathetic for cutting down what seems to be a pretty nice tree there. So I would not support any of them being removed.
Andrew?
I'm fine to remove number one.
Marguerite?
I hate to be this person. I wouldn't remove any of them, but I'll defer to the Planning Board.
Well, they did remove the first one, Marguerite?
Yep.
So you don't want to remove number one, even though they did?
No, I'll agree with removing number one, but I think it should stay. But I will agree to removing it.
Okay, Al, I will support removing number one. I sympathize with a wicked slope driveway and don't want anyone to get hurt. So I'm in support of removing number one, two. And as Al said, number two and number three are moot because you have to have both boards, so number one it is. Okay, so Al, you want to make a motion?
Sure. I remove, I move that we authorize the resident at 20 Woodbury Road to remove tree number one at his own expense, subject to an acceptable surety bond by the tree company that's hired to work in a public space.
Second?
Second.
So, Sam, you seconded?
I did.
Okay, so roll call vote. Marguerite?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Sam?
No.
Al?
Aye.
And Cook is aye, so 4-1 to support removal of tree number one.
Could I add something?
Yes, you can.
Just about to add to what Bill said. I think we should make it clear that it's the full removal of the tree, including the stump, because the stump then creates a... the full removal of the tree, including the stump, because the stump then creates a hazard for snow plowing, motorists, so they should, you know, completely remove the tree, including the stump, having the stump ground.
All right, so I'm gonna revise the motion that Al made and add to it, complete removal, including the stump. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Marguerite?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
No.
Andrew?
Aye.
Cook is aye, so four-one to allow Mr. Chen to remove Tree Number One at his expense with a property security bond and including the stump. Mr. Chen, are you still there? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, did you understand our votes? So, Number One got a positive vote from both boards to remove, and Number Two and Number Three did not.
Okay, understand.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Thank you.
Okay, Mimi, back to you. Yeah, that's the one that's, oh, that's Woodbury, there it is.
Southborough Tree Warden, under the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 87, Section 3, and the Southborough Planning Board, under the requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15C, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. at the Southborough Townhouse, McCallum Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, in Villa Zoom, to discuss the removal of Twenty-Six Resident DPW requested trees located on the following streets, Flag, Middlewood, Meadow, Southville, Parkerville, Walnut, Woodland, Richards, Edgewood, Stowe, and Deerfoot. The trees range in size from 12 inches to 48 inches and consist of four maple, nine ash, and 13 oak. Those who wish to watch or participate remotely may do so by accessing the meeting link at the town website under Virtual Meetings. Each tree is posted, a complete list of the proposed tree removal, location, species, size, and pictures can be found on the town website, southboroughmass.gov/266. Any person wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated ejection to the proposed removals may be made in writing prior to or at the hearing. Christopher Leroy, tree warden designate, Mimi Latrell, Planning Board Chair. So, I think the easiest way to do this is to pull out any holds or questions, and any pruning, and do the removals and the pruning separately, and then discuss the holds or So, Mr. Stein, do you have any that you would like to hold or question?
I'm having some technical issues here pulling up the packet, so let's come back to me, please, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Houlihan?
Yes, I'd like to hold Number Two, I'd like to hold Number Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, and Twenty-Six.
Two, Twenty-One, Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, and Twenty-Six?
Yes.
I have a couple, sort of more administrative, we have, I'd like to hold Number Two, it was not posted properly on the tree, maybe
Yeah, so just pull them out, and then we'll talk about them. So, we're gonna pull everything out, any questions or any holds, and then vote the removes and the prunes separately, so just anything that you want to pull out of the removal or prune list.
Okay, so some of it's, Marnie has as well, but I have Number Two, Number Five, Number Six. A question, Eighteen and Nineteen, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, and Twenty-Six.
Eighteen, Nineteen?
Twenty-One, Twenty-Two. Yep, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, and Twenty-Six.
So, she added Eighteen and Nineteen?
Yes.
And Twenty-Two? And Twenty-Two?
Twenty-Two is already held, and Five and Six.
Twenty-Four.
I didn't have Twenty-Two held. Can we just go over what's been held now between Two?
Two, Three, Four, Five?
No, not Three.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Two, Two, Five, Six, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six. Thank you, Marnie. Ms. Brosio?
I have no additional holds.
Mr. Stein?
No additional holds.
I have no additional holds. So, the, so we'll just talk about that in a minute. Then the prune, Number Three, Number Four, Twenty-One and Twenty-Four, is everyone, well, Twenty-One is on the list.
Yep.
Twenty-One and Twenty-Four. So, those are pulled out of the prune list also, Twenty-One, Twenty-Four?
So, Twenty-Four is a remove, I don't want to pull that out, I'd like to discuss that.
Twenty-Four.
Twenty-One, I didn't understand, maybe ask Mr. Leroy, it's the one with a burned limb, but I don't understand what the arborist note meant, is it possible trim? And which part, so Twenty, so, okay.
So, Three and Four, prune.
For you to hold on the prunes?
Yeah, Three and Four, I'm okay with those.
Okay. Jessie, do you have any additional holds?
No.
Are you okay with Three and Four to prune?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Marnie, do you mind doing it?
Sure. Bear with me, I'm not usually the motion maker. So, Planning Board makes the motion to accept trees on the 2024 June 18th hearing tree list, Twenty-Eight Flag and Seventy Deerfoot, Three and Four, for trim.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes.
Brosio, yes.
Let me just figure out what's been pulled out and what's left, so we can make a motion on removes. Two.
Mimi, to try to avoid confusion, maybe we should weigh in after each vote, too, so we don't get too confused here?
Okay.
Okay? All right, so on these two, we've got two trims that Mr. Leroy has recommended, Planning Board has supported, anybody in Select Board disagree?
Nope, looks good to me.
Okay, so Al, you want to make the motion?
I move that the trees approved by the Planning Board for trimming be trimmed.
Second.
And I'm just gonna amend the motion to say it's Trees Number Three, Number Four on the spreadsheet? Okay, so the amended motion has been seconded, roll call vote, Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
And Cook is aye, five-zero to approve, Select Board approves the two trees to be trimmed, Number Three and Number Four.
So, I got the packet up, Mimi, if you want, we can go through, like, which ones are okay to remove, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, it would seem it's One?
One's already done.
One's gone.
So, One has been removed.
Oh, okay.
Seventeen.
Right.
Well, Fifteen's already gone. It's Seven through Seventeen, Twenty and Twenty-Three.
Oh, Sixteen's already gone.
Sixteen fell.
Fifteen and Twenty are gone.
So, Seven through Fifteen, plus Seventeen, plus Twenty-Three?
Well, Richard's Road is removed, so Twenty is removed.
So, Chris, can you confirm that, is it Fifteen or Sixteen that fell in December of 2023?
Sixteen.
Okay.
Sixteen and Twenty.
So, Seven to Fifteen?
So, not Sixteen?
That fell, Mother Nature took care of that one.
And Seventeen, correct? Eighteen and Nineteen are holds.
Yep.
Twenty is okay to remove, correct?
It's been removed, it's on school
Been removed, sorry, yep, yep. Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three is okay to remove. Okay, and the rest are holds. Okay, so, the motion is for the Planning Board to approve on the 2024 tree hearing list, the removals of trees numbered Seven, Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, Seventeen, and Twenty-Three.
Second.
Any discussion, are we all okay with that? No further discussion, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes.
Brosio, yes.
Select Board makes the same motion to approve removal of trees Seven through Fifteen, Seventeen, and Twenty-Three.
Second.
Roll call vote, Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Cook is aye, five-zero.
Okay, so, start at Number Two. I think Number Two wasn't posted.
The post blew off in the two weeks, it was, I posted it, it just, sometimes that happens because of the staples, you know, we have to use, we don't use nails, so the post, what was on the tree blew off, so we can postpone it and just put it in the next group.
Yeah, I think it, I think it needs to remain posted.
Yeah, the posting fell off, so.
The next one, Number Five, is that you, Debbie?
Yeah, so both Five and Six, Middle Road, One and Two, I know that they're not in great health, but I didn't think that they were dead, so, I don't know, Chris, if you have any additional, I mean, they had leaves, I looked at them closely, it was getting a little bit dark, but they looked alive to me, just not great.
Tree Number Five, I believe, and the arborist, also second opinion that that tree, because of its lean and its health, should be removed, due to its proximity to the road, and we've cleaned up wood from the road from that tree over the past six months, so it is breaking apart, like ash trees do when they start to decline in health, so I still recommend that that gets removed. The Tree Number Six, that tree actually leafed out more than I thought it would in the last couple of months after doing this list, so that tree, I would agree that we could trim it when we address the other tree and just monitor it, because it is in better health than the other tree, but it's still, you know, needs to be monitored, but at this time, it could, at least it's straight, and it does have a lot more leaf than we thought, than I thought, so that one I would change to trim, and we would monitor it. No problem.
I agree.
So, I think, so I agree with Mr. Maria on Number Six, and I'm glad that Mr. Leroy says that that, he believes that can be trimmed, because I
Five was a removal. I still recommend removal of Number Five.
Yeah, and Five definitely had an uncomfortable lean across the road, so I would agree with the removal of that one.
Chris, could I ask you a question before planning votes on that? When you say poor health of that tree, is it suffering from a particular disease?
A lot of times, the ash trees do get ash-borer disease, I can't confirm that that tree got it, but it's definitely not going to recuperate from the condition it's in now.
So, it might be ash-borne.
You're talking Five or Six?
I'm talking about Number Five.
So, Marguerite says Five is dead, but Six is doing better.
Than it was three months ago when this list was put together.
I think they're confused.
Wait a minute.
Can we just look at the picture?
Yep.
This is labeled Tree Number One.
That's Tree Number Six. That's Tree Six, the one behind it, to the left of the fire hydrant, is Tree Five. That's Tree Six in the foreground. That's what I identified as right of the fire hydrant, if you're standing
Yes.
Tree Number, Middle Road Number Two, so you've labeled your picture Middle Road, Tree Number One. So, I'm confused.
So, the posting on the tree says
Yeah, Number Six.
Yeah.
And that's this, that's this one.
That's the straight one.
And that's Number Six.
So, which one are we trimming?
The one in the picture.
Number Six. So, Number Two as the tree location, so it's Six as a TID, but the tree location states 103 Middle, Number Two, right of fire hydrant.
Correct.
Mimi, Al?
That's what I'm saying, it's mislabeled.
Mr. Stein?
Oh, I was gonna make a motion, but, Marnie, are you saying that we have these trees mixed up or something?
No, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure we choose the right one, because
Yeah.
Number Six on our list says TID, but the tree location says 103 Middle, Number Two, right of fire hydrant, and then it says poor health, leaning over road, that, in my opinion, is labeled as Tree Number Five.
Chris, can you take that out, and so
Yes. Yes, so that's labeled as Tree Number Two here, but they're saying to trim that one, but that's, that's not, it's posted as Six, but it, do you see what I'm saying? It's posting flipped, so TID should be 103 Middle, Number One, Number Five, TID should be Six. They are flipped. Because you just showed me the listing.
Yeah.
So, I think they're just, the description is flipped.
Chris, do you agree?
Are we talking about the label of the photo, not the posting?
Just the description on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, well, Tree Number Six does have a slight lean, it's not the Tree Number Five, which has a major lean, yeah, I mean, that probably could have been more descriptive as to how much of a lean, moving forward, saying that it had a lean, it does have a slight lean.
Well, I just think that Tree, Tree Number One in the picture is actually Number Two. So, I think we've, we've settled it.
Yes, so we are going to now trim Number Six, but do we change the TID? We have to, because it's posted as Number Six, the one we're trimming, correct? The posting is Six, so we actually have to change our physical sheet from the numeric order of One, Two, Three, Four, Six, Five.
Chris, do you agree with that? I'm a little confused.
Yeah, so, I think Six is okay, and it is the one to the right of the fire hydrant, across
across from the top. So I just think this, this picture is labeled incorrectly. So the tree's posted correctly. This is number two.
Tree is posted correctly.
It looked okay to me when I looked at it.
If the trees are posted correctly.
Go ahead, Grant, while they're talking.
I just wanted to make a clarifying comment. I took a picture of the tree, and it looks to me like number six is the one that is next to the fire hydrant and is the one standing straight. I don't know if that's what you guys agreed on, but that's what it looked like to me.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just.
The pictures, I think, are mislabeled, one and two. But that doesn't really, they're posted correctly. I think they're on here correctly. This is just backwards.
Okay, but his tree location description references the picture.
So this one to the right of the fire hydrant, that's the one that's to trim.
So that, that is, stays number six?
Yeah.
Okay, so that doesn't change numerically?
No.
Can you tell me which one of this photo?
So that's number, that's number five. The one that's leaning over, on the right.
That's number five?
Yeah.
I, I'm not in favor because there's too much confusion right now, but when I went out and I didn't take a picture, but I saw some leaves at the top of that tree, so I'm gonna vote no on both of these trees. I think we need more information.
Okay, all right. There are leaves, but it's got a unhealthy lean over the street. Mr. Stein? What do you think of tree number five?
So my inclination is to allow removal of tree number five and allow trimming of tree number six. And that was the motion I was ready to make.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion after each tree, or should we do them all at, when we finish?
Well, I thought five and six, we could just knock off now.
Okay.
But it's up to you, Mimi, you're running it.
Okay.
Or we want to do it.
So Ms. Houlihan, what's your preference on five and six?
So I, I walk daily by number five, and I agree, like, there's always tree on the middle of a Middle Road, so I just think it's a dangerous tree, and it leans very far over. So I'm always worried, to be honest. So I would agree with getting rid of number five and maintaining number six, trimming number six.
Ms. Brashio?
Same.
Okay, Jesse, you want to make a motion?
Motion is that the planning board authorize the trimming of tree number six, the removal of tree number five on one oh three, Middle.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, no.
Brashio, yes.
Okay, Select Board, we've got two trees. Number five is proposed to be removed, number, excuse me, number five is proposed to be removed, and number six to be trimmed.
I'm good with that. I'll move. We agree with the planning board's decision on that. Second.
All right, roll call vote, Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Cook is aye, five zero. So we agree with the removal and the trim. Next. Okay, eighteen and nineteen, who held those?
I have a question for Chris. I held those. So I drove down that road, and it's like some little offshoot of Parkerville. It's two oh two, but it looked like a private way, but I didn't know.
That's a town road.
That's a, is it a?
We maintain it, we plow it, we sand it. It's not a driveway.
It's not a driveway. Is it a scenic road?
I'm not sure. It's, I'm guessing it's part of Parkerville Road, or it's a part of the old Richards Road.
It was the old Richards Road, as a matter of fact. That, that's the access potentially to the Halloran property back up there.
Considered part of Richards Road.
Okay.
So. But you can see on the town GIS, it's clearly a town asset, and those trees are clearly in the right of way.
Yep. I don't, I don't have any problem with removing. I just didn't know if it was a scenic road. Thanks.
Yep.
I'm in agreement with removing him. Mr. Stein?
Same.
Ms. Houlihan?
Same.
Ms. Brashio?
Same.
So do you want to make a motion on those two?
Yeah, move to remove trees eighteen and nineteen to two oh two, Parkerville.
Second.
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
All right, Select Board, our turn, and we are in a greeble bunch tonight. Okay, so I'll make a motion to remove eighteen and nineteen.
Second.
May roll call vote, Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew? Marguerite?
Aye.
Cook is aye, five zero to remove eighteen and nineteen. Back to you, Mimi. Well, we didn't, we didn't complete the discussion on number two. So number two, evidently, the posting blew off, blew off. There wasn't posted when I went by, and it's required to be posted. So I would say to hold off on that and put it on the next list. Mr. Stein?
Yep, some moved, or, yeah, some moved. I'll go with that.
Yes, agree.
Mr. Maria?
Demiria, yes.
Ms. Brashio?
Yes.
So we have a motion and a?
Second.
Second. No further discussion. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Select Board moves to remove number two from the list for removal and put it back on at a later time.
Second.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Is this tree a danger to the public? I know that's a tough question to ask.
If not addressed, I believe that they are, would become, at any time, they could be a safety issue, yes.
When's, when's, when do you think we'll have the next tree hearing? Six months?
Oh, that tree, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about two.
Number two. No, we're on number two. So Al wants to know if, if not do anything with it because the tag blew off.
No, because if it was, we would move to say it was an imminent hazard status and take it down immediately, but it's not at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to remove number two from the list, not remove it because the tag blew off, and consider it at a later date.
So moved. A second.
All right, Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Cook is aye, five zero. Back to you, Mimi. Where are we? Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Oh, was that, was that a question on, is that a trim, Chris? Twenty-one?
I didn't understand the arborist.
Twenty-one is, yes.
Okay. Is it?
I think what happened there is originally, when I was putting this list together, Cliff hadn't looked at it yet, so that's what the NA was for. And then after he looked at it, he also recommended that it was, to be trimmed, trimming would be fine to address it.
So when I looked at it, I, I don't have it up right now, but I thought that the burn mark was sort of on more like the trunk. So I'm just wondering, what part would get trimmed?
So what's happening with that tree is when it gets snow, rain, and the canopy gets heavy, the leader that's out over the power lines, by taking that off, it's gonna reduce the weight going over the road, so it's not going to move so much towards the wires.
Oh, I see. So it's the leader that you're gonna take off?
Yes.
Just the one, it's a big branch, I see.
Yeah.
And if I can just add on this tree, too, how many times, Chris, has the fire department been out there? And Andrew, you can attest to this, too. It's right down the street from both of us. Every time there's any wind, this tree catches fire, and the fire department ends up out there. So, yeah, it happens all the time. The wind catches it, or like Chris said, the canopy gets heavy, and it catches fire. Somebody calls, and they come out there, and then by the time they get out there, it's out, and it's, it's a complete waste of resources. It truly is. So if trimming it is gonna alleviate that, that's great.
The National Grid actually approached us originally and wants to take, wanted to take the tree down. And our solution is, let's take the weight off of it. Now that the wire is, what they call it, booted, it has that orange rubber on it, so it won't arc against the wires, so it protects it from starting a fire. So now we can kind of watch it and see, you know, if it's gonna continue to make contact, because it'll show rub marks on that trunk if it continues. But it shouldn't.
So I'm in favor of trimming that resilient little tree. Mr. Stein?
I'm more of a remove on things like that. So that's what I would prefer.
Ms. Houlihan?
I'm gonna stick with the arborist and Chris's opinion and go with trim.
Mr. Maria?
Yeah, I agree with trimming.
Ms. Brashio?
Sorry, thank you. Knowing the issues that this tree has, I would be willing to give it a trim and see if it makes a difference, but I would sincerely hope, Chris, if we see, the fire department still keeps going out there, that this comes back as a removal. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion on that one, Jesse?
Sure. The motion is to allow the trim of tree number twenty-one near one forty, Woodland, over wires.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Select Board, motion is to trim tree number twenty-one.
Second.
Any further discussion? Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew? Marguerite?
Aye.
Cook is aye, five zero to trim. Number twenty-two and twenty-four? So I think, Chris, has twenty-four been updated or to a trim?
Yes. So same thing as the tree on Middle Road. If you look at the tree on just Google Maps, you can see, I think the pictures were done last year. The canopy was sparse at best. This year, it looks a lot better than it did last year. So at this point, trimming it and just monitoring it, I think would be the best thing to do with the town's resources.
Okay. And were those your holds, Debbie?
Well, I have, I have kind of a different, different issue. I don't think we duly notified the public that these are American elm trees. I think that that was an update that was noticed, and I saw some handwritten crossout or something from maple to elm on the version on the packet that is publicly posted on the DPW website, but the legal ad doesn't list elm, and I believe that we need to list the species. But even not, it still points to the planning board website as the official packet, and that packet doesn't list elm. So as we know, the elm tree is, was America's first public shade tree. It's an endangered, endangered tree. At one point, there were twenty-five million elms, and a couple of years ago, there were about thirty-eight hundred. And I don't know what the number is today, but I think that we should be doing everything we can to save that elm tree, or both of these elm trees. I know one is a little better than the other. I was most concerned about the thirty-six inch, but I believe that we need to post the type of tree. And seeing that that's an endangered tree, and it didn't make the legal ad, I'd be looking to hold the two elm trees. I also think that there's a lot of interest from arborists and universities to try to save elm trees. So, you know, I think that that's, especially the large one, because I think that one is in better shape, but that would be a great project for somebody. And I think that the town should do everything that we can to save our elm trees. So I am not in favor of taking, trimming, or, well, I understand the trim, but I think I would like to have somebody specialized take a look at that, because I don't exactly know which branches are to be trimmed. I only saw one little one hanging at the bottom, but I understand there's maybe some big ones at the top. And, you know, I, I think we should do everything that we can to save this tree. So there's a legal question. It doesn't say elm in the legal ad. Does that matter? I think that we have a minimal requirement to list the roads and the species, correct?
So I think that is correct, and I think that because it's going to be trimmed, I don't think that that would make that much of a difference, because it's still gonna be there. If it was a removal, I would agree with you.
Okay.
But that's, I mean, that's up to the, you know, the board. But I would be in favor of trimming that. The other two are maple, correct? Chris?
There was an update on the DPW site, the boat, that there's two elms now.
There was a?
Is there? I thought it was one.
So the tree number three is the elm. The up, the original, that was a mistake. The, so the mistake on, on tree number three, when I posted it, I changed on the posting on the tree that it was an elm. It was an oversight by me in the process. And then when we updated this originally, tree number one was, got changed from maple to elm, which was a mistake. That is a maple.
Oh, so that's a maple. So there's one elm.
The two smaller trees that are in worse condition are maples. The thirty-six inch tree number three is an elm tree.
Okay.
Okay.
Chris, how would you be trimming? When I looked at that photo, I saw that also, Grant had taken some photos, and I looked at it as well. I only saw like one dead branch lower, but I think Mimi had mentioned that there's maybe some dead ones above. So I, I think there's a fear that if the up above ones are trimmed, that, that maybe puts it off balance and maybe even puts the tree health, you know, at risk.
So the, the professional companies that we've used in the past trim elm trees all the time, they would deadwood the tree, they would make sure they're, you know, keeping the balance of the tree. The first time, it's a process, because you don't want to take too much wood out at once. So they would deadwood the tree. There's not a ton of dead wood in it. There's a lot of small dead wood in it, but they would clean all that up, and then just see how the tree responded.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Just twenty-two?
And then the?
Maple, change your thoughts?
I can just say, too, the tree company that we use has trimmed our elm trees in the cemetery that we saved that were in pretty tough shape, and they're all thriving now. So they, they do know what they're doing when it comes to trimming, I can, I can honestly say. I have confidence in them.
I'm glad that that got promoted to a, to a trim. I know it's got some?
Yeah.
Dead up there, but it's a huge, big, beautiful tree.
Yep.
And twenty-two, to me, is not in good shape. Most of the crown is missing on that one.
I agree.
Mr. Stein? Twenty-two and twenty-four?
So I'm just, Chris, are you saying that both of those can be changed to trimmed?
No.
No, just number twenty-four?
So twenty-four is a trim, and twenty-two is still a remove in your book?
Twenty-two, yes.
It is a maple.
Okay. And twenty-two, that's, what's the safety issue with that, that has to go?
It's, it's just not in good shape. I think the roots were compromised when we did the reclamation on Deerfoot Road. I can't remember when, it was about ten years ago or so, and I think the roots that went under the road obviously got compromised when that happened, and, you know, it's a slow process, but, you know, the trees, it's been failing for the past.
So, yep, so I'm okay with twenty-four trimmed, twenty-two removed.
Remove twenty-two.
Any, anyone?
Twenty-two is removed.
Yeah. You want to make a motion, Jesse?
Yep. So the motion is for the planning board to authorize the trimming of tree number twenty-four and the removal of tree number twenty-two at sixteen Deerfoot.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Second.
Sorry. Let me do it again. Twenty-two is proposed to be removed, twenty-four is to be trimmed.
Second.
Okay. Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew? Marguerite?
Aye.
And Cook is aye, five zero. Okay, the next one, twenty-five, to Stowe Road.
I think, I think I might have held that. I, Chris, I wanted to ask, I- Chris, I wanted to ask, I couldn't tell because there's so much vine on the, you know, note to everybody, if you have vines, sometimes they're alive under there, beginning smothered by the vine. Is the vine killing the tree? Is the tree dead underneath? It was really hard to tell, but there were leaves and it looked like the tree might be alive, and I was just wondering if they could remove the vine.
Well, the vine isn't helping the tree for sure.
Yeah.
So the issue with that tree, though, is, there again, we did a reclamation on Stowe Road. The tree is right on the road, the roots, probably 50% of them that went under the road were compromised at the time, and there's, you know, issues with the base, it has base rot.
Those are the roots.
And it has, it's developed a lean towards the house, so that's really the issue with that tree.
And this is the road right here.
You're showing me pictures. Thank you. I appreciate your thoughts on that. That's okay, that's okay with me.
Do we want to do 26, too? Is that where at the end?
Yeah, let's do 26. So 26 is two, it looks like two trunks, and I didn't see any rot, but, oh, there's rot on one, but not on the other.
Yeah, right.
I just want to make sure, are we taking both down, or can we see one?
Nope. Just the 20, the 28-inch piece to the left, if you're looking at it.
Right.
That has the cavity that you could put your head in.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, I mean, if you wanted to get down that low, but it's, it has a substantial cavity in it.
And so it just gets cut, and the other one will be fine?
The other one will stay, we'll monitor it.
Yeah.
Sometimes because the way it's in a V so low to the ground, when you take that weight off, if that, if it continues to want to go, but it is leaning in the wooded area. Thankfully, it's not leaning towards the road or the house that's there, so if it did start to go, we'd be able to see, because it will pull the pavement up, so.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Thank you.
So there's another tree to the left of it that has orange tape around it. Is anything happening to that?
Yeah, that was the resident, so what happens is...
Oh, he put, so you knew what was, he was talking about?
Yeah, and so when they call, we say, oh, can you mark them so I can come out and look at them? And the resident marked, I think, three trees, and the one tree was the only one we felt we needed to address immediately.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question. Any, anybody else on that? Mr. Stein, either 25 or 26?
I'm okay with removing them.
Do you want to make a motion?
So I guess the motion is to allow, am I correct that the consensus is to allow removal of those two?
Yep.
Yeah, so the motion is to...
I'm shaking my head.
Just the one, just that left portion.
Shall I?
Do we lose you?
No, I'm here, excuse me. The motion is to allow the removal of trees number 25 and 26 for the submission.
Second.
Madam Chair, can I, can we just specify that it was only the left portion of that double tree?
Sure. So move, so the left, the left portion of that double tree.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Lutrelle, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes.
Brashow, yes.
So to be clear, what you just did on 26, you removed the left portion?
Yeah, that's good.
Correct.
Okay.
It's a V.
Okay, so I move that we removed tree number 25 and removed the left portion of number 26.
Second.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Oops, wrong, aye.
Cook is aye, 5-0. I think that's it, Mimi? Okay, you want to close the hearing, Jesse?
Could I say something?
Of course.
Just before we're all done, now that everybody's here together? So in case any residents come forward, National Grid is doing a hazardous tree remediation program in town. They've been working on it for about three months. They're doing circuits that they've had a significant amount of outages on over the past few years in Southborough. It was enough to trigger them to come into town and do a survey of trees they think are issues. So if people see red tape, blue tape, that's National Grid. That doesn't mean the trees are coming down, it's just that those are the trees that are marked, and then they'll present it to the town, what they want to do with the town trees in the right of way, and of course, then they'll put an application in. But just, there's been a lot of people calling the office, thinking it's the town taking down trees. Any blue-red markings on Sears Road, Flag Road, the, really the main roads on this side of town, National Grid has been doing, you know, a survey and inventorying those trees and doing a health check, so, just so people know.
Okay, thank you very much, and we sincerely appreciate all your hard work in doing this. We know it takes a lot of time.
Mimi, can I add one thing before we move on? I just wanted to thank Mr. Farrington for every time there's tree hearings, he goes out and takes the time, as an educated citizen, to go out, again, using his own time to go out and do this, and his comments are always useful, and just know that it's greatly appreciated. Grant, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Chris. And didn't National Grid do Sears Road, like, just a year or so ago?
Yes, it did, but they're, it's part of that circuit.
Yeah.
It starts in Marlborough and it goes to Westborough, so they start at the beginning and they just, they're going through it again.
Oh, okay.
That section, they did everything they needed to do, but they still do it as part of the project.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you want to close the hearing, Jesse?
Yeah, the motion is to close the public hearing for the trees.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Lutrelle, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes.
Brashow, yes.
And, Mimi, we're going to remain in session, is that correct?
Yes, if we want to comment on the, the next agenda item.
Yeah, so...
But we're not going to sit up the thing.
Should I move now, should I move now to adjourn post that?
We can adjourn after that.
Yeah, so you guys will just adjourn without me then?
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
Yeah, but I'm going to hang on for this.
Well, it's one hearing, so we can do it, but I think it's probably not, okay, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on behalf of the Select Board.
Second.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Marguerite? Marguerite, we're just closing the hearing.
Aye.
Okay, Cook is aye, 5-0, so totally closed. Thank you, Planning Board.
Thank you.
And seriously, Chris, thank you much, very much. And Bill, thank you, too, for that part.
Yeah, just the one, Sam.
Well, where is she? Brett, can you go get Freddie? There she is. So thank everybody for hanging in there for our tree hearing. So is Sarah Warden here? Hi, Sarah. So we're going to, you're going to, you're not going to be next, you're going to be next to next. We're going to talk to Freddie and to Joyce with stewardship and open space, and then we're going to talk to you about being appointed to open space. Okay, so we're almost there. So Freddie, can you come up, and Joyce also? So you guys sit here, okay?
We're getting our 10 minutes.
You're going to get your 10 minutes? Absolutely. You think it's 10 minutes? You think it's going to take 10 minutes?
I won't go over.
Okay, good. We're going to talk to Sarah after this, which I just told her. Ready? So welcome, open space, welcome, stewardship. So Freddie and Joyce, why don't you introduce yourselves and your committee, as far as who's here?
So Joyce Greenleaf, I'm the chair of the stewardship committee. I have the full stewardship committee here. I have Freddie Gillespie, who's our representative from open space, Kevin Farrington, who's our representative from conservation commission, Kat McKee behind me, who's an at-large member, and also Brett Peters, who's an at-large member.
Okay, thank you, Freddie.
And I'm Freddie Gillespie, chair of the open space preservation commission, and I have our two members, Leslie Nadech and Joan Levinson, sitting behind me.
Where's Joan? Right there? Hi, Joan.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so last meeting, we held the appointments of four committees to, this meeting, to be able to discuss some issues we have with each of them that are different, and give a chance for the committees to come and talk to us. So we're going to start with open space and stewardship, and we're doing this together for a reason, as we've talked to both of you. The Select Board felt like there is enough of a commonality of purpose that it's worth discussing whether you think that the two committees should be merged into one or not. So we want to hear from you. We're going to talk first, and then we're going to ask each of you to, I'll pine on that, and then I, Freddie and I've talked, so Freddie is going to have, and Joyce with your help, 10 minutes to talk about the work that you guys do.
I think Freddie has 10 minutes. I would like at least a couple of minutes to...
You can have a couple of minutes, okay? All right? Okay, so, Al, I'm going to start with you. Well, sorry, you held this, and let's talk about what we want to, to discuss with open space and stewardship.
So I'll start with stewardship. And I appreciate what all of the volunteers do in town. I've been a volunteer for plus or minus 20 years, and I'm a volunteer today. And, but I also have concerns about a couple of things. The first one is that this board has made a fairly public statement about the need to build affordable housing and to take actions on affordable housing, and it's hard to build affordable housing anywhere, because everywhere you want to buy, build affordable housing. Somebody says, I don't like it there, I don't like it here, I don't like it anywhere, you know, I can start going into my inner Dr. Seuss here in a minute. And what I found particularly disheartening was that a board that we appointed, essentially when a, an affordable housing program came up, said, not in my backyard, and particularly, we're talking about 120 turnpike. And I found that to be just disheartening, that, you know, here, we've said that this is a priority for the town, the governor has said, this is one of the few things I'm going to agree with the governor on, that this is a priority for the state. We are hundreds of thousands of units of housing short, and I got a not in my backyard from a board that we, we appoint. And that leads me to my second concern, which is the stewardship committee, correct me if I'm wrong, was formed to help the conservation committee, commission, manage the Breakneck Hill parcel. And I believe that your remit exists only on that parcel, that you don't have the authority or the remit to opine on abutting parcels, particularly not abutting private parcels. We have a planning board, we have a conservation commission, we have a zoning board of appeals who are all responsible for those areas, but I, I think this is a slippery slope, because there are a lot of abutters to the Breakneck property, and if you, is the stewardship committee going to opine and act on an official basis when somebody wants to build a swimming pool, or somebody wants to put up a fence or a shed? So I believe that, that those are the things that concern me, is sort of creeping authority where I'm not sure it exists, and just my real disappointment at the not in my backyard.
Sam?
Yeah, I guess I, I guess I don't agree with Mr. Hamilton on the basic issue there. I think that I'm happy to listen to opinions from any committee on any topic. However, I think that there's value in terms of streamlining the committee process some, and I've suggested in the past that this, this is one that is interesting to look at from an objective standpoint. The missions are similar, there are actually open positions on each of the committees here, and in fact, one could create a new stewardship open space committee that wouldn't need change in the responsibilities particularly, so I think both committees are doing a good job and could continue doing that job combined. I think that could actually fix some of the administrative issues that we've seen in the open space side, as a matter of fact, and it, we've got seven people now between the two committees who are serving, and that would make a seven-person committee, which would be, I think, a good size for it. It's something that administratively we could do fairly easily if we chose to do it. Stewardship was an ad hoc committee created by the Select Board in 2005. Select Board could change that structure administratively and create a new committee to do that, so I'm interested in that. I'm also interested in listening to the two committees to talk about your views on that, so.
Andrew?
Yeah, I, I agree with what Sam said about the, that we'd like to streamline committees, and I'm interested in hearing, you know, what the two committees have to say about that. And part of the background of this is, when we had a Select Board goal-setting meeting, and we had actually an outside consultant come and help us, I think this was two years ago, I mean, one of the immediate observations that this person made, who was a former, who was a retired town manager, was you just have way too many committees. I think there's been just a proliferation of too many committees with similar missions. I agree with Sam that you could, you know, have an appropriately sized committee that would do both functions. And to Al's point, I also, I share Al's view on the substantive affordable housing issue, but I think that it's, you know, I can understand why some of these committees basically opposed the project. I think in the big picture, that project looks like it's heading towards a compromise solution that could work out for everyone, so, you know, I think a broader theme that has been discussed in the, in the discussion about this the last couple of weeks is, you know, committees having different views on the Select Board, which I think there's, there's got to be some leeway there. I understand that, particularly where boards and committees have a particular focus, it's sometimes natural, they're going to, not always going to agree with the Select Board, I can understand that, but I do think Mr. Hamilton makes a good point, that I think that the government functions best when each committee is really focused on, you know, the particular task that it was created to deal with. So I think my issue really there is with some of the things that open space preservation commission has done, not so much stewardship, so I'll just leave it at that.
See, now, we've got five people in Select Board because you want a variety of opinions. You don't want, if you only wanted one opinion, you'd have one person here. So I totally support open space. I totally support stewardship. I was with John Butler, the first and second house on Davis Road, when Davis, when Ray Davis first sold that property, so I know the area really, really well, believe me. So it has nothing to do with whether we think you do good work, you do great work. Open space is vital to a town like ours, so we know that. We just thought that, again, when we looked at committees, and we're not picking on anybody, that what you two do has a lot of similarity. So if you had one committee, you would have one set of minutes, you'd have to worry about two, you'd have more people, you wouldn't have to worry so much about a quorum as you do now. I know we're going to probably appoint another open space tonight, so that will help that one, but, you know, you're two down in stewardship, you're two down right now in open space, so it does seem logical to at least consider, but what I said to Freddie, and I think Joyce said maybe to an email, is I won't support combined committees if that's not what you want to do. It's really, you know, we want to hear from you, we want to hear the pros and cons, and we will listen to you. we will listen to you, but we don't totally support it. As far as Al's comment on affordable housing, ditto that, we are truly trying to do something about affordable housing in this town. You've probably heard me say this ad nauseam, the average house in Southborough right now is $900,000. It takes about $180,000 of income to afford a mortgage to buy that house right now. So we become really hard to live in at this point, so we really would like to try to add some housing stock that would allow anybody to live here that wants to live here. And so we were, and still are, very supportive of the 40B on 120 Turnpike Road. And yes, I agree that there is a compromise in the works that is under the jurisdiction of the planning board, and so it may work out so that the 40B gets built and the 6.2 acres gets donated. But there should be no one here that thinks that you're not supported because you are. So I talked to Freddie, I told Freddie, she asked for 10 minutes or so to talk about the work that you do. Joyce just asked for a couple of minutes, so the floor is yours. Marguerite, I'm sorry, I'm not used to somebody being on Zoom. So, Marguerite?
I know, I'm hovering over you like some kind of ghost here, but...
You are, you are. I didn't know if you knew that, but that you are.
I'm just going to listen right now. I don't really have any, I don't really have anything to add.
Kathy, can I say one other thing just to get a comment on is, so the terms for the stewardship committee, which is, it's not a bylaw committee, right?
That's right.
Okay, it's one year. But the term for the open space preservation is five years. I think it's a very long term. You make an appointment, and then, you know, you're not going to be, that person's then committed, appointed for a significant period of time. The only other committees I can think of that have similar terms would be Planning Board, which is elected, and the ZBA. So what are your thoughts on reducing the length of the term? And then you would need to then have it, you need to then structure it so you'd, you know, have, what's the right term?
Staggered.
Staggered terms, yeah.
That has to go to town meeting, though, if we did that.
It's also a lot to ask for someone who's just looking to volunteer for the first time. Are you ready to sign up for five years?
Well, we've got someone tonight that is going to sign up for possibly four years. Okay, so Freddie, you want to go first?
Yeah, I do. Thank you very much for allowing us to address some of these issues. The first thing I'd like to say is I talked with Andrew, and he gave me four points he'd like us to cover. And the first one was, well, I'll just briefly run over them, there was describe what we work on, why we work out of our lane where we're not authorized, being behind on minutes, and would we like to merge with the stewardship committee. So I think the first thing I want to do is, who's giving that out? The annual report. I copied out the two pages of our annual report. I just wanted to, you can find it in the book, if you have the book, and it's online on page 44 and 45, I believe. So in the annual report, we start out with the charge of our commission, I want to say this, to facilitate the preservation of open space. And one of the things that has been out of our lane commentary is that we work on native plants. And I will read what we wrote. This has been not just the first year, the second year, maybe three years, it's been in the annual report. As land becomes scarcer and prices higher, the Open Space Preservation Commission has been seeking innovative ways to fulfill the charge of the commission. Preserving open space within Southborough is accomplished not only by purchasing land or permanently protecting land through legal instruments such as conservation restrictions, but ecological landscape management of unprotected open space is also a form of land preservation. And I will say that many of you may have a narrow view of what open space is. And I will say that there are many types of open space. And I first came up with this idea from a planning board hearing on a subdivision where the developers' consultant was saying, "It's 75% open space because anything open to the air and sky is open space. It's a definition." Well, it's not the definition you need to use for a subdivision, open space required, set aside, but I looked it up, and you know what? It is a definition. Anything open to the air and sky, green spaces, are a type of open space, just like you need different types of open space requirements for conservation restriction, different types of open space requirements for a CPA project or for town parks and recreation. There's different types of open space and requirements. So that's where we came up with protecting the ecological integrity of all the land. And this is not something we made up, believe me. This is nationwide and globally, the UN has weighed in on it. We are losing 30% in 50 years of our common backyard birds because of the lack of native plants. 30% common backyard birds. That trajectory is increasing. So one of the reasons you protect open space is wildlife habitat. So this is a well-known, maybe not in all quarters, but you can read about it in every New York Times or other papers, magazines. So that's the Native Plant Initiative. So I want to just talk about some of the things we're working on. The master plan implementation. The master plan does not authorize us what to work on, but it's guidance of what projects to work on. Our authorization came from town meeting. So under that, we are working on implementation of different areas we were charged with working on, expand the use of native plants and pariet, yeah, excuse me, prioritize awareness. You can read the whole thing. Prioritization of education and outreach to the community about the existence and impact of invasive species. We've been working with the USDA and Mass DAR. We have a new infestation of spotted lanternflies. We also have the Emerald Ash Bore. We're having a workshop planned in August. We're going to bring education and information to people on how to deal with these, never mind all the plant invasives, the jumping worms. That's a big project. We're starting to at least address it and try to look into how we educate people about it, and getting the best experts to help us learn what to do. We also have collabora, one of the charges is to develop a collaborative approach for the strategic acquisition and protection of properties. We're working with SVT, they have a new tool, and we hope they're going to be bringing a workshop here in the fall that we will share with other communities as well on how to use this tool to determine which priority, which parcel should be priorities. So there's, that is a, what we do. Now, to go back to the, out of our lane, I only have one copy of this, but I'll get more for everyone. I want to talk about March 22, 2004, a letter from Town Council. The Open Space Preservation Commission, empowered by the Southborough Code, does somebody have this you could pass up there? The Southborough Code, Chapter 6, Article 3, is charged to serve as facilitators for protection and preserving open space. The Open Space Preservation Commission is part of the subdivision review process with input as to protecting and preserving open space consistent with the standards of the Planning Board's rules and regulations. I note by way of reference to those rules and regulations that Section 244-12D refers to the town, a Southborough's policy and major objective of the Planning Board to preserve, to the maximum extent feasible, the open rural character of the town and its significant natural features, and to minimize removal of healthy trees and stone walls, excessive grading, and destruction of natural vegetated features. We are fulfilling that in our native pollinator, native plant initiative. When we write letters to the Planning Board at their request and their support of looking for our opinion, they don't always have to rule or agree with us, but they look forward to it. Secondly, I have, or thirdly, or whatever, Article 20, Town Meeting, 1990. We have an open space policy. We all should be adhering to it. We, the citizens of Southborough, value open space as an asset vital to our town. We choose to exercise our right to help make decisions relating to the use of our land. We ask town boards to use their full authority to protect the town's traditional landscape and mixture of land uses. As we grow, town planners must keep the preservation of woodlands and field as a high priority and negotiate with developers accordingly. Public negotiation should be made of any and all lands offered to the town, and town officials are encouraged to pursue the acquisition of acceptable land. Wetlands, ponds, and reservoirs must be given the fullest benefit of law, respecting them, and any additional regulation should be passed as needed. This is our commitment to the preservation and conservation of Southborough's open space resources, passed by majority vote. We follow this policy. We're not acting out of our lane. Thirdly, or fourthly, whatever, I called, who's in charge of telling us if we're acting out of our role or our authority? Turns out, the Inspector General's office. So when this first came up last August, I called them, and I spoke with an official there. And he told us that our charge is quite broad. If you want to tell us what to do, the Select Board needs to go to town meeting and change our charge. As long as we are acting reasonably and within town policy, we have the authority to write letters to boards and commissions on letterhead. There is no limiting our decision to preserve and facilitate that preservation of open space in the way we are doing. And if you don't like it, I can understand, you may not, obviously you don't, go to town meeting. They're the ones who give us our charge. And I will also state in your Mass Municipal Association handbook, it says, going to have to read this so I get it right, the handbook for the Select Board. One second, and I'll be done. Of course, I can't find it right now. Anyhow, it says, it's important enough, I want to find it. From the MMA Select Board Handbook, "Once appointed, town boards and commissions must be free to act on their own without interference." And I say that we have been honorable and respectful and following the town policy, following Town Council's advice, and also what the Inspector General says is within our authority to do. So as far as joining with the stewardship committee, I sit on the stewardship committee because I represent the commission there. We have very different roles of work that we work on. The stewardship committee is not going to start reviewing subdivision plans and site plans. And I, my stu, my open space commissioners are not going to start digging, doing trail maintenance and bobbling habitat. And by the way, we had nesting bobblings this year at Breakneck Hill because of the due diligence of this commission. We have kestrels there, we have at risk, we're a hotspot of biodiversity because of the commission. I don't want to stir your thunder, sorry. And then I have one final thing to say. You talked about, you talked about the 40B next to Breakneck Hill. Because of the input of the stewardship committee and the Open Space Preservation Commission with the support of the Planning Board and all the neighbors that showed up, we now have a compromised situation. The land is, some amount of the land is proposed to go to the town as it was legally required to do. Breakneck Hill's habitat and ecology and views for people walking there will be better protected, and we're still supposed, you know, we're going to get a 40B there. What's wrong with that compromise? And here's the thing, over the years, the Open Space Preservation Commission has had heated disagreements with the Board of Selectmen. Never once did they tell me I should resign, never once.
The Board of Selectmen has not told you to resign as a whole.
Well, Andrew suggested I should, and Al Hamilton certainly said it.
That's not true.
Okay, so Freddie, we got to get back to, it's great. We love the golf course, it's great, but I need both...
Let me just say, we went to town meeting, the Selectmen wanted to have the whole golf course turned into the public safety and the rest available for development. There was a citizen's petition to preserve it all. The Open Space Preservation Commission had an amendment to put the public safety building in one area and the golf course in the other. About 15 minutes before town meeting started, the Selectmen came up to the Open Space Commission and said, "Can we put your amendment on the floor?" Not have it be an amendment, but the Selectmen saw what I saw. You weren't going to get the public safety building, and you weren't going to get the golf course, the open space. What did we do? We worked together, we compromised, and I call that Southborough's grand compromise, and that is solely because the Open Space Commission dared to disagree with the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Okay, so I take it you don't think the committee should merge? I'm not trying to be smart about this. Have you actually taken a vote and you think the cons outweigh the pros and therefore do not think it's good? We don't think you should stop doing what you're doing, we just don't see why you can't do both things in one committee.
I will just...
And this is an honest, Freddie, this is an honest discussion. So can we just have an honest discussion about this? We are trying to reduce the number of committees, we've got a lot of vacancies on committees. I've heard someone say to me recently, "Well, that's because the Select Board gives people such a hard time." That is such crock. I mean, we give people not a hard time, there's just not enough people to go around with all these committees we have. So we're trying to make things more efficient, and that is our job. So all we ask for is just an honest discussion of why you think you shouldn't merge. And if you, and I just said, if you don't think you should, I for one will not propose you merge. So we're listening to you. So just tell us what your discussion has been as far as whether there's even any thought that it might be a more effective committee as one.
The Open Space Commission discussed this and voted that we did not want to merge. I will say the five-year term, there's a lot that goes into learning the ins and outs about all of the different aspects of land protection and education and invasive species. If you look at the master plan, there's a lot of duties that are assigned to the Open Space Commission.
Okay, we agree.
Five years is not too long, they're willing to do it, you know...
You say they want to do it, you got three people. You don't have, you...
I would have had five. I had two more ready to go after what happened, and I was the one who said that what happened at the Board of Selectmen meeting during the appointment of Joan caused two other people to not submit their applications. And if you don't know that this is an issue, you need to check it out, because I'm not making this up. And the other issue I didn't address was the minutes. That's on me as the chair. We're behind, we're working diligently, we have to, there was reasons, it was overturned, people not understanding how it is done. As chair, I am totally responsible, not my commissioners, who are new and learning. So we are working on it, and it's mostly, for the most part, right now, it's the documents. We're printing out all of the minutes, and we're going through to see what documents we have to provide, and I expect to have that to the town clerk with, I don't want to say next week, but within a month. And as soon as they come in, we'll be shipping them out. But that is not because the lack of commitment of the commissioners, and it's not because we have three commissioners, not five. I am telling you, and I'm not a liar, I would have had five right now if what happened at the, her appointment did not happen.
So your promise is to get the minutes caught up within the near future?
We're working on it, you know, yes.
Okay, what about an appointment to CPC from Open Space?
Same thing. I have two commissioners who are new to open space preservation, and they're not. They weren't sure that they could take on another appointment. This has not been my refusing to appoint someone, it's been on every agenda, and we discuss it.
Okay, we're just trying to help you run your committee more effectively. That's why, again, the one committee seemed to make sense to us, so...
I believe that we have a new, a new person to apply, who has applied. I believe she is willing to help us with the minutes, and I, the first thing we will do at our first meeting is to see if she wants to step up and take a position on the CPC.
She did say that in her application, I agree.
But we can't, we have to vote and have to ask her.
Okay, all right, so your committee has decided that it would not be a net benefit to merge the two committees together, is I correct?
We voted not to.
Okay, all right. Joyce?
Thank you. So the stewardship committee also took a vote and discussed that idea of merging, and in short, we voted no. We've been functioning and highly effective with five active, engaged, and committed members. And I'd like to spend a few minutes explaining that, and it helps to understand with a common, shared understanding of stewardship, which I don't know that everybody truly has, that shared understanding of what our mission and role is. Stewardship manages Breakneck Hill and makes recommendations to the Conservation Commission. We manage that conservation land with conservation values such as habitat and biodiversity in mind, but also passive recreation, such as trails. Those two things alone keep our plates full, very full. And I contend that we handle those responsibilities very, very well. And I want to show you some exhibits to really demonstrate that. So 20 years ago, Breakneck Hill looked like this. It was overgrown with invasive bittersweet, considered the worst infestation in Metro West. Some of you may remember... Some of you may remember that. I mean, it was like tunnels. The trails were like literally tunnels of bittersweet. Now, because of stewardship's work and management and help from a federal grant, we've, um, we've cleared that bittersweet and have been able to create trails that aren't encumbered in that way. The second photo that she held up is the same vantage point as the first. It's the same vantage point. So it's a pretty remarkable transformation of that property. We've also established critically important habitat in the, in the way of grasslands. The federal grant we had was for grant, grasslands creation, and we now have beautiful grasslands there. Did you hold up that one, the third one? The beautiful grasslands. And, uh, grasslands, as we know, are a habitat that is declining globally and is the habitat for grassland nesting birds. Freddie mentioned the success of stewardship in attracting bobalinks, which is a grassland nesting bird. We, this picture was taken two weeks ago, that's a male bobalink. That's an enormous success for stewardship, for, for fulfilling our mission. Some of you are also aware of the, um, the work we do planting natives in our ecology research garden, working with a professor who has identified two native Massachusetts bumblebees at risk of being extirpated from the state. Both identified at Breakneck Hill, there's active research there, and the work we've done has sustained a population of these important pollinators right here in Southborough. I don't have a picture of that tonight, but I think that that's another huge win for Southborough and for the stewardship committee. These enormous successes that we've had at the same time that we welcome dog walkers, bird watchers, trail runners, um, this, our successes are not one and done and require our constant vigilance for new threats, new, uh, I think Freddie mentioned the spotted lanternfly, that's a threat. Japanese knotweed is encroaching all over town, so far we don't have it on Breakneck Hill. I think it, it could be a matter of time. We have to be vigilant for these kind of invasive species. So our plates are full, and right now we have the town, that farm dump, if you just hold up that last.
We understand what's going on with the dump, believe me.
That's a huge restoration project.
I know.
So our, our plates are full. So I would contend that our five-person committee is hugely effective, and in fact, that we don't need two new members. We haven't been able to attract someone from Recreation, which is a designated seat or another at-large. So I feel like we meet our quarums, we meet regularly, and we've been enormously effective as a five-person committee.
Okay, so you don't want to reduce the seven to five officially?
I would reduce from seven to five.
Because that's what we, we're going to do several of those at town meetings. That one we can do without town meeting, so you'd like to go to five and you'll be full, and then you've got a quorum of three and you don't have to worry about four. Okay, so you would like to reduce it from seven to five. Okay, all right. So it sounds like neither of you think that there is any wisdom or value in merging, although I think the Select Board continues to think that there is. But it's your call, as far as I'm concerned. And you said tonight you don't want to do that. Anybody else disagree with what I said, or you want to go a different way? And if not, we're going to move to appoint stewardship first. So go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, I, again, I guess, I think, conceptual, I have a conceptual difference of opinion here in the sense that logically, one could take the current activities of each committee and the current makeup of each committee, put them together, and both committees could do the same things that you're doing today and have been doing from a people's standpoint as well as from a charge standpoint. So conceptually, I think that works. Clearly, neither committee thinks that works. So I guess I'm not prepared to, you know, push beyond that at this point. The one suggestion I would make, I would like to keep the issue sort of open. I think it would be fine to, again, reduce stewardship by a couple of people if that's what you want. And again, as Kathy says, we can do that since it's an ad hoc committee. My proposal would be to consider appointing the new OSPC member for, to fill the unfilled term there through 25 as opposed to 28 or whatever the other option is there to, again, preserve some flexibility for that one. So that's sort of where I'm leaning at this point.
I can see how this is going, but I, I want to, I spent some time on our GIS system today, and found it sort of interesting number. Did you know that roughly 25% of the surface area of the town, which includes the MWRA, is in protected open space in one form or another? It's over 2,000 acres that's in the MWRA. And it adds up to about 3.8 square miles of, out of a total of 15.7 square miles, which is the, the total town. I simply think that we as a board are elected to set priorities. And right now, I believe that the priority for our community is to build affordable housing. That if, and to the extent that that rubs up against other priorities, I think we simply have to focus on that because the Commonwealth has a crisis. And quite honestly, this community has failed when it comes to building affordable housing. It's utter and complete failure. And I'm, ran on, told the voters I was going to try and do something about it, and I am going to try and do something about it to keep my word to the voters. And to the extent that we have to give a little in other areas, I think it's appropriate to do so.
Andrew.
So just to deal with the stewardship committee, I'm prepared to move to reappoint all the members to the stewardship committee to a one-year term.
Let's make sure, Marguerite. Marguerite, you really haven't had a chance to weigh in.
I, I have nothing to say, thank you.
Okay, so Al, I appreciate everything you said. But I second Andrew's motion to appoint off, I believe it's all five, for a one-year term to end 6/30/25, and that includes Mr. Farrington, Kat McKee, Freddie, Mr. Peters, and Joyce.
Second? I thought I made the motion.
Okay, so, all right, so I'm second, you probably did, so I'm second in your motion. I just want to make sure it was clear who we were pointing here. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to appoint the five standing members of the stewardship ad hoc committee to another one-year term ending 6/30/25. All in favor? Roll call vote.
Abstain.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Abstain.
And Cook is aye. So that's three, zero, two, to appoint. So all five are appointing. So thank you, Kat, thank you, Brett. Where's Mr. Farrington? Is he here? Nope, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Okay, who am I missing? Oh, Freddie, so Freddie and Joyce. So thank you, Joyce. Okay, we appreciate it. Breakneck Hill is beautiful, and I really did live there for a long time, so I know it well. And Freddie, thank you for bringing everything you brought, and I appreciate everything you said. Okay?
Are we going to be appointed?
And we're going to do Open Space next, okay? Excuse me, Kathy, you're not taking public comment. We will, but let's get through this first. We want to meet with the committee first completely, and then we will take public comment. Okay, so I move that we appoint Leslie, which, which one's Leslie? Leslie? Okay, sorry, Leslie. Leslie Nadech?
Yes.
To the Open Space Commission for a term that is going to end 6/30/29.
Second.
Any further discussion of Leslie?
Do, do you have a view on kind of what you've heard, and in particular about, you know, I just have a really, I think, narrow concern. I think that the work that Open Space does, you know, in terms of workshops, education, that's, I think, laudable, good. My, my issue is I think we have already a permitting system which is too complicated. And I think the idea that the Open Space Preservation Commission has a role in reviewing subdivision plans and taking opinions about placement of native species plants on private property, all right, and parcels that are not, don't abut conservation area or anything like that. I think that is a distraction from the main focus of the Open Space Preservation Commission, which is just the preservation of open space. So what are your thoughts on this?
I think that.
Can I do a microphone, please?
Sorry, you'll have to get to a microphone.
Yeah.
Maybe hand to hand to the microphone.
And just reintroduce yourself, so anybody listening knows who you are.
Yes, Leslie Nadech. And I came to the commission because of my interest in conservation.
Yep.
And, and was very happy to learn about the whole native plants system and how that, what an impact that can have. And so certainly it's, I'm happy to support it on all Southborough open space that we have. I don't know that I can speak to putting it on, on, you know, people's private property other than what you said before, educating the public as to the benefits of, of native species and biodiversity.
Okay, so.
Not sure if I answered your question, but.
So do you think that there's a, do you think, I, I agree, native species, public lands, existing open space, parcels that abut open space, but, I mean, the main specific controversy that had brought this to a fore was Fayetteville Hall, and there during the site plan review process, the applicant complained about the fact that the Open Space Preservation Commission had written letters to the planning board offering an opinion that there should be a condition of the approval of the site plan for that project, that there be native species plants, that that be a requirement of the site plan approval. And there, I thought the applicant had a good point of why, why should I, what is the role of the Open Space Preservation Commission in taking a stance on something like that? I think it's kind of mission creep, and it makes the permitting process more complicated, and I feel sympathetic where I feel like you've been kind of, you know, in a.
Fayetteville Hall.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like something that is open to the public here.
No, it's pri, it's private property.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So again, I feel, you know, you're the person who's appointed this particular year, and there's been a, you know, we have some issues just about, or at least a couple of us, about the overall, what is the proper role of the Open Space Preservation? So that's the reason why I'm asking these questions now, right? And I just think this is not something where I, again, Open Space Preservation Commission wants to take the stance that it did on the, the 120 turnpike. I, I understand that, understand that. This is something, this is just a narrow, whether, would you, would you, um, do you think that's part of the role of the Open Space Preservation Commission is to make, make, you know, recommend conditions to private permits about native species plants where it's just private property?
Not necessarily if it's private property.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Ms.
We would go by the guidelines.
Can I speak to the, to the planning board as we're an elected board, and you're telling us how to do our process? Hold on, Ms. Latrell.
Well, we would have gone by the guidelines. We did go by the guidelines. That are laid out.
Our agenda item is to appoint members that are up for reappointment for four committees. So we're trying to stick to our agenda so we can get through this. So thank you for your, your answer there.
Thank you.
Okay.
I can't clear this up.
I'm going to let you, just let us vote so we can get this part done, okay? All right, so I will make a motion to reappoint.
Actually, the motion has been made and seconded, I think.
Okay, so I'm going to reiterate, reappoint, sorry, Sam, Leslie Nadech to a term ending 6/30/29 for the Open Space Commission.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Cook is aye. Marguerite?
Aye.
Fine, so five, zero, so Leslie, we, you have been reappointed. So thank you very much for serving.
Thank you.
Now, before we go any further, we're going to continue on a path that makes sense to me. So there is a person here that is up for appointment as a new member of Open Space. So thank you, Freddie, thank you, Joyce. Why are you looking at me like that?
I wasn't, I was.
All right.
Just drinking my wine.
So, yeah, you stay there. And you want to introduce her? Hey.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Sarah Warden.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi.
So it's my understanding that Open Space recommends Sarah as a new member of Open Space, that will be your fourth member, is that true?
Yes.
I'm asking you. All right, so Sarah.
Sorry, I had to count.
Tell us something about yourself and why you'd like to be on this committee.
Okay, well, I moved here about 20 years ago, and I loved the convenience of all the area has to offer, but also all the open space. You know, I've always cared about the environment. I started an environmental group in high school when it wasn't cool, in the 90s, and it was called, a lot of people, you know, didn't really understand. So I've been always just really concerned, and I wanted to volunteer, but to be honest, I've been afraid to apply because I wasn't sure of how it would be perceived, because I think people have perception of people in town. So I hope to be appointed, though.
So we have appointed a lot of people over the years, anybody on the Select Board, and I've never seen someone on their application say that they liked to do minutes, so that.
Well, I, I was a.
That alone is pretty much a.
I was a proofreader. I used to do indexes of the Staples catalog that's like this big, and I would look through, and I would literally type in what page everything is, and I was really good at it. So I have a weird quirk.
We have a lot of committees that want you to be on it.
We have about 15 committees you can join.
I can be the minutes woman.
Okay, so, Al?
No questions.
Sam?
For my prior comment, I guess I would propose that this one be through, to fill the unfilled portion of the term of the person who recently resigned, so that would be through 6/30/25.
So we get two, we could do 6/30/28, 6/30/25, is that right?
I believe I'm 6/30/25.
Yes, you are.
So you can't appoint her to my term.
But.
So what's the other term that's open?
What I'm looking at is there's a vacancy of, the vacancy has a term that expires on 6/30/25. So I think.
Yeah, the vacancy.
So I will say somebody, we have five members, five years, one every year, and if somebody wrote the wrong year in the paper you have, that's.
So the two opener, 26 and 28, it sounds like?
I just looked at.
I wasn't looking at what everyone's term was when I came here.
So there's.
I recommended her for the 2028 because she was willing to do it.
Yeah, the one who resigned was 6/30/25 term. So.
Freddie said that's her term, so it sounds like.
No, Freddie's 6/30/26.
She's 26.
So you're 26. I'm 26.
Yeah.
Wish I was 26. All right, so 25 and 28. Marguerite, any questions for?
Sorry.
Okay, none? Okay, so the only issue on the table is whether there's a term of 6/30/25 or 6/30/28.
Okay, I, I would like, what is your view on two things? One is the, the question I asked about this narrow issue about, do you think it's the appropriate role of the Open Space Preservation Commission to be, to make recommendations about native species requirements on permitting decisions of other boards on private property, right? My own view is I think that the Open Space Preservation Commission is more effective at preserving open space, if it really just focuses on that. And then the second is, and maybe this is just a little bit too much to ask where you're just looking to, is this the first committee you've volunteered? Okay, is, there's also the vacancy, which is an important one, on the Community Preservation Commission, which is that.
The committee, commission needs to discuss that with.
Okay, so, but, Mike, is it something you're interested in, or? Okay, so, but, Mike, is it something you're interested in or willing to do? Because we would like to finally fill that role. Our Community Preservation Commission has a seat for a member of Open Space Preservation Commission. I think there's actually the buckets, these are the like dedicated lanes of funding that CPC funding goes, one of them is specifically to open space, so I think it's important that there be an OSPC representative. So again, some.
I'm not sure it's fair to ask Sarah about that.
But I think, okay.
But, she's a candidate, right?
If you say, I haven't even considered it, that's fine, but.
I think Sarah has seen, has heard the conversation tonight, so I think that gives her some context, and I also think it's unfair to ask somebody who's new to the game.
So we've asked, Freddie has committed to two things, to get the minutes caught up and to get someone appointed to Open Space, correct? To the CPC, and it will be the first, it's on every agenda, I, I'm a little angst because it's up to us to explain to her what the CPC is. Okay, so we're not gonna, we stopped talking about it, so we're back to Welcome You, and my motion is to appoint Sarah to a term ending 6/30/28, the later term, for Open Space.
I think I have to answer Andrew's question.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So I don't know particularly, like, that's a hard thing for me to answer, but what I do as a person who really cares about the environment, if I see someone using something, a pesticide, I like to come up with an option as a, this could work, vinegar instead of Roundup, for example. So I'm just saying, as a person, I don't like to tell someone, no, you can't do that without another option. So if it was a recommendation that they asked, then I would definitely wanna support, you know, more native plants on something. Would I go up against someone and tell them they have to do that? No, that's not my personality, but I do like to offer other options. So I don't, I'm not, that part is not something I've ever thought about, what you're asking me, but as a person, I do like to offer other options, but I'm not like an aggressive person that's gonna tell someone they have to do something, but I will make a recommendation that's healthier for the environment and for people, and for everyone, you know, for wildlife. So that's just kind of how I think.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know.
And I appreciate your answering the question, even though Kathy was.
Sorry. No, I understand, I, you know.
I think it's a tough question when someone hasn't been on, because Open Space should be working on town property, open land, et cetera, that you don't work on private property, that's the point that Andrew's trying to make.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to appoint Sarah to a term, so I'm saying I'm going the longer term, you can vote against it and see, see what happens, but I'm doing 6/30/28. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote. Al.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Andrew.
Aye.
Marguerite.
Aye.
And Cook is aye, five zero, so thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, the gentleman back at the Round Table Theatre is our town clerk, you've gotta be sworn in within 30 days to, so you go see him and raise your right hand, and you'll be on the committee.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And I thank you for this opportunity to share some of the work we do. I would like to invite everyone, Sunday, Garden Tour, celebrating collaboration, native biodiversity through pollination. Garden Tour starts at the library at 11:30, we're walking over to the new Heritage Park, which also has plants for preserving biodiversity through pollination, and then at 1 o'clock, we'll be going over to the Beals Preserve for the Whit Beals, preserving biodiversity through. What time, 11 what, 11:30? 11:30, I have a couple of flyers, it's on the page, but I will say, this is how we do education, and I think unfortunately to newer members, you sort of twisted it that we go around to private properties and tell people what to do. We never do that. We do education, we do the winter sow, we educate people, the permitting process. Freddie, truly thank you, but we really gotta move on, we've got a whole list of stuff to get through tonight, so thank you. I'm just gonna say, the permitting process is different, and she didn't understand that, and Leslie is just learning about it. This is not us going and telling people what to do, it's us making recommendations through the permitting process, which Town Council in 2004 said was within our authority. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Latrell.
Thank you. Mimi Latrell, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. Prior to the Planning Board, I was on the Open Space Preservation Commission for 13 years. Just wanna clarify, the Planning Board's an elected board, and we have our own policies, and I take offense, Mr. Dennington, that you trying to insert yourself into the Planning Board policies. The Planning Board solicits input for several entities in town. Getting different viewpoints and opinions makes better projects. In this particular project that you're referring to, that applicant was required to have native plants through its Conservation Commission permit. Our LID bylaw requires natives, and our site plan prefers natives. So they were, we solicited their opinion, they gave their opinion, the Planning Board makes the decision. And when I was on Open Space for 13 years, our opinions were solicited at that time, too, and we gave our opinions, sometimes they took them, sometimes they did not, but they were definitely within their lane. And one other thing, DCR property is not protected open space, it's owned by DCR, they can do whatever they want with it. Thank you.
So hold on a second, Marnie and Lisa, you both are Planning Board, so we really are, we've got a lot to get done, do you have anything different to say than what Mimi said, or you just wanna reiterate it? Because this is not on the agenda tonight, we're getting, we're going astray here.
Marnie Houlihan, 26 Clifford, Planning Board, I, it is a reiteration, but it's a very concerning reiteration. Planning Board is an elected board, we have our policies and we have our procedures. I think it's highly manipulative and, and not collaborative that the select board, specifically you, Mr. Dennington, are trying to manipulate the way that things are going with open space and how we solicit opinions with open space with many different boards. We don't appreciate this, the town doesn't appreciate this, and I do think it's very important for me to make that statement.
Thank you, Marnie. Andrew, you want to say anything, or go on?
No.
Okay, all right. Lisa, are you gonna reiterate?
Brief, I'm just gonna make two quick points.
Okay.
You can make more, but I'll make two.
Okay.
I just wanna clarify once again that on 120 turnpike that's been brought up tonight, and the letters that were written by stewardship, and that, at no time did any board or committee that was solicited for or gave comment regarding the 6.2 acres say they did not support affordable housing. It was never about the affordable housing, it was about the 6.2 acres that abutted the most protected land we have in this town. So it wasn't about whether they supported or they didn't, there was a written site plan approval that required the giving of this land. That's what they wrote about, that's within their lane, that's protecting the stewardship, protecting Breakneck Hill and open space, protecting the open space and facilitating for that. So I just wanted to make that clear based on comments that were said, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, so next is CHOPSY, is Dorian here? So you wanna come on up? You can sit.
I, I'm a little tentative, I don't wanna go sit up there. The last time I sat up there, I was brought in here under the pretense of having an interview.
Okay, Dorian, if you don't wanna sit up there, that's fine.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna allow my character to be defamed again, so the purpose of us being here tonight is to either reappoint me or to not reappoint me to CHOPSY. I've done a good job, I've done everything I'm supposed to, we have a well-oiled, well fine-working committee, and I am not gonna sit there and have lies told about my character and my integrity questioned again. So you can either vote yes for me or vote no, that's up to you, but you will never be given another opportunity to insult me or to defame my character.
No, I'm just gonna insult you.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Okay, so this one's a little bit different than the first two. As we know, we intend to, there's a working group that's been formed, five people in it that intends to take a look at trying to find a way to do affordable housing more effectively than we have done in the past. So I will disagree with Dorian as far as effectiveness, we have done very little in this town over the past few years. Proof of the pudding is the money still sits in the accounts and just continues to grow. So we have found very little use of the money that's been aside for affordable housing, and we believe that other towns have found better ways to do this. We know that Westboro's been brought up, Lexington's been brought up, there's probably others, so the five people have been tasked with getting together very quickly and coming back with a recommendation that we can take to town meeting at the fall town meeting to reform Affordable House Trust Fund and CHOPSY into something that will have the ability to do this job better. I personally believe we need people on this committee that have backgrounds in affordable housing, it's not me, I shouldn't even be on Affordable House Trust Fund, we'll tell you that right now. I don't know enough to know how to truly put deals together, leverage federal resources, state resources, et cetera. So that's where we are tonight, which is why, in part, that this one was held. So we can reappoint Dorian, it's gonna be probably for a very short period, she is one of the two designated from CHOPSY that has been asked to work with Al and with Andrew and with Lisa to come up with a recommendation to the select board that we then put on the warrant for September 30th, right? So I don't know how she, to me, there's a practical problem here. She's been appointed by CHOPSY to do this, as has Paul Desmond, and with her not being on CHOPSY, then how does she do that? So I'm fine with reappointing Dorian, but that's one person's opinion here. So, Al.
I'm torn, because our affordable housing efforts have been a complete failure, and it's shown because we have produced no affordable housing, and we have had no affordable housing program in town for over 10 years, and, so I'm gonna, that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, so let's hear from everybody, then we'll decide what to do. Sam.
Yeah, I think that while we're reorganizing this process, I'm not in favor of reappointing any of the three up for reappointment from CHOPSY, I don't think that precludes Dorian from participating in the working group, as a matter of fact, and that would be helpful if she would.
Okay, there's two that are up, because remember, John Wood is not.
Okay.
Being reappointed, so it's Jesse and it's Dorian.
So again, I'm not in favor of reappointing anybody at this point while this gets sorted out.
Andrew.
I think, consistent with what Al's saying, we need a significant shakeup on this committee, and so I do not support reappointing Ms. Jazinski, and I would support appointing Mr. Stein.
Wood.
Yes.
Marguerite.
I'm in favor of appointing Ms. Jazinski and Mr. Stein, but we really have done no affordable housing in the last 10 years.
Okay, so Al, you said no to both, or to, there's two that are up, Jesse from Planning Board, he's a Planning Board rep.
I'm a no.
Sam, you're no for both?
No for both.
And Andrew, you're no for both?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to appoint.
Lisa.
Quick, just a quick comment.
Okay.
So I think this, this is reflective of what was said tonight about why people don't volunteer. You've got longtime volunteers here, who else is stepping up to the plate to do this, and you're turning them away, and you're leaving committees with vacancies. How is that serving the taxpayers of this town?
Lisa, I don't think you're listening to this. We, you're the one that said in March of 2023 that we need to do something about the structure of affordable house, we were all in it, the select board was on it, and we know nothing about affordable house, how to do, how to do it.
I completely agree.
This was your idea.
My idea was that five selectmen should not sit on the trust, because it's a conflict. That was my.
So, I agree, I agree, right? It's not a conflict, we just don't have the background in affordable housing to do it. You need people who truly do this for a living, know how to do it, know how to leverage things. So we're trying to get this done, I don't know why you don't want to recognize that fact. We're not trying to beat up on Dorian and certainly not Jesse, we just want to get this reformed. We're talking about something that's gonna happen on September 30th, this is June 18th, so three months, right? So you've got three months to come forward with recommendation as to what to do, it's not like there's gonna be a project that's gonna be proposed in the next three months.
So what do you lose by not appointing her, Kathy?
I didn't say.
This is, the optics of this are horrific, that's all I'm saying, is, you're saying that in September, we're all gonna work together and come up with something else, me included, Dorian included, but you're not gonna appoint her to the committee that's probably gonna go away, so she can't participate in the business of CHOPSY until September? I just think the optics of that, Kathy, are just horrific, so I will leave.
Can we just all take a deep breath here? This is getting really unpleasant.
Excuse me, Marguerite, I have a right to speak, and I'm sorry that you don't like what I have to say, but as a citizen and a taxpayer in this town, I have a right to stand here when I disagree with something that you may be doing and how someone's character's being assassinated, a volunteer.
Lisa, her character is not being assassinated.
You think your character is, Dorian?
All we're seeing is we're trying to reform this and find people who do this on a day-to-day basis that know how to do it. That is not anybody, there's not one person here that knows how to do this effectively, except for maybe Al, because of the stuff that he's done with Habitat. I don't think Jesse's gonna have, say that he's gonna raise his hand and say he's an expert, you're not an expert.
I'm not.
Dorian's not an expert, none of us are, we're trying to, well, he's, he's actually done a whole lot, I'm Dorian.
You're talking about redoing this in three months.
Okay, I'm gonna, this is our meeting, I'm gonna control this, okay, so we're gonna vote for.
Grant has a comment.
Go ahead, Grant, calmly, please.
Grant Farrington, 58 Flag Road, I'll be calm, I just, I would just hope that the select board realizes that even if you do bring it in September, it's really town meetings decision, so you shouldn't speak as if it's gonna happen in September, because it might not.
It might not, we agree, all we can do is try.
I might vote against it based on what I've heard tonight, thanks.
Okay. All right, so the motion is to reappoint, let's do it one at a time, reappoint Dorian Jazinski to CHOPSY for a term that ends 6/30/27. Is there a second? You can vote against it, but let's at least vote.
Second.
Okay, all right, roll call, vote, Al.
No.
Sam.
No.
Andrew.
No.
Cook is yes. Marguerite?
Yes.
Okay, so that is a two-three vote to not reappoint Dorian. Okay, Jesse, so I make a motion to appoint Jesse as the Planning Board Representative to CHOPSY for a term again to end 6/30/27.
Second.
Al.
I'm going to vote yes. Mr. Stein is an elected official, and I think we need a great, great weight to that.
Sam.
No.
Andrew.
Yes.
Cook is yes. Marguerite?
Yes.
Okay, so four-one to appoint Jesse. So, all right, moving on. Okay, so the next one is CPC, and we've got, I think, three there. Okay, so we've got three people that are up for appointment, Lisa Brascio as Planning Board Rep, Kristin Lavoy as Rec Commission Rep, and Ben Smith as Conservation Commission Rep. Hello, good evening. Okay, so, Sam, I'm gonna start with, actually, I'm gonna start with Andrew on this one.
I, the, getting back to the theme of affordable housing, I attended the CPC public forum a couple weeks ago, I thought it was very informative, you know, the one slide which I saw, which is, I think, an issue for the town, right? You see the buckets and the amount of money in the buckets, and you see the community housing bucket that's just, you know, sitting there, there's a lot of money there, right? And I think that this is money which has been taxed from people for the specific purpose, so it should be put to the specific purpose, but this is not the time for kind of a lecture about this or anything like that, because I know that we've had this, we've had a discussion about it, and we're gonna make progress on it, I'm just very eager to make progress about it, so.
As are, as are we.
Yeah.
It's, it's over a half million dollars, and, and I can, I seldom try to speak for the whole committee, I can speak for the committee clearly on this one, we wanna see that money spent on affordable housing.
Okay, how can we do, I know we're gonna.
Yeah, I understand you don't wanna get too deeply into the weeds, here's, I'm gonna try to summarize what the committee said, after the public forum was over, we discussed, we discussed this issue particularly, and, you know, there's the talk of completely reconstituting Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee and CHOPSY, so it's, I was trying to think earlier of the best way to present this to you, imagine if. Imagine if, boy, the committee didn't feel comfortable talking about trying to process an application funds for, for Fall Town Meeting to a, a committee, frankly, that doesn't exist. It hasn't been constituted yet, we don't know who is going to be on it. And not only that, but not for any identifiable project either. Like, the, the amount of uncertainty there, you know, if somebody had come, for instance, to Select Board seeking ARPA funds, you know, a year ago, and said, "Well, we'll put in a warrant article, we'll get a committee together to spend it, so trust us on that, and, well, once we do that, we'll figure out what we're going to spend it on." You know, "We're going to get a project together." That amount of uncertainty, I think, would have raised some skepticism with the Select Board, and I think the, the Preservation Committee similarly was just uncomfortable with the, the uncertainty there. However, we did talk about, and I've spoken with three, four of you, at least, on, on strategies to, you know, to pursue at our next application cycle, to get these funds transferred over, to get affordable housing built in town.
Yep. All right. And then, you know, another thing which is important to me is, again, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, of course, a lot of the people, the people who we are appointing are volunteers, were also volunteers, and I think that, um, I appreciate people have strong views about things, but I think, and I'm happy to, you know, Lisa, you were saying you have a right to come and say things that I, we disagree with 100%. I think there's, it's important, the, the way that you convey it in a way which is not, which is civil, and I think those are some of the concerns that I have with one member in particular.
I would, if I may, may I speak on that?
Yep.
So, you know, I think it's, it's clear to everybody that you're, you're discussing Kristin Lavall. And I've, I've heard the criticisms, criticism that's been raised, and I would like to point out that none of this is criticism of her performance as a Community Preservation Committee member in fulfilling her duties as a committee member. She's done an exemplary job, she is the Vice Chair, and I think as, as long-term volunteers, many of you are familiar with, with, um, there are occasionally, unfortunately, on boards, committees, and commissions, folks who don't, who don't do the homework, who show up to meetings not, not prepared, and haven't invested the, the time to review materials and give it deep thought, and Kristin is somebody who does all of that. Now, she certainly speaks passionately when she feels strongly about something, and I know she has disagreed with the Select Board on, on a couple of, of issues. There's certainly been some disagreement there, and she is, she has no doubt spoken passionately about that. And it's, you know, it's frustrating at times in town government, speaking from my own experience, disagreeing with folks. Losing Kristin would hurt the committee in our ability to get a quorum together, which is already, already very difficult. We have one member more than a bare quorum, and I'm going to say, over the past year, if, if we had only had five members, fully 30% of the time, we just, we wouldn't have been able to meet. And given, given the year that we had the application process, we would have been stopped dead in our tracks. I, I, you and I have spoken by phone, I, I think I've spoken with another, another member of the Select Board as well, and I, I understand what you've said. I just want to reiterate that Kristin has done a fantastic job as a committee member. She's, she's worked hard for the, for the committee, and is one of the, one of these rare volunteers in town government who actually does put the work in, and we, I don't want to lose her on this committee.
So, Ben, I sincerely appreciate what you do. You are a good human being, I love working with you, I love hearing what you say, everything you say means a lot to me, but I'm, I want to address this one, and I'm going to look at you, Kristin. I don't know Kristin Lavall very well at all. The only time I've really met her was when she was on REC and was trying to get the field at Calandra Field fixed a few years ago, and she did a fantastic job. I was on advisory, I supported her, she knew that, I, I talked to her about what to say, et cetera. She stood up on that stage at Trotter, she took all kinds of barbs from the audience, including Ms. Jazinski, who was opposed to it. They were all fine, the comments were fine, we ended up with a really, really good project. It took a few years to do, but she stood up there, and I remember thinking to myself, "Boy, she can really take it, that was a great job." I don't know what hap, that's not that Kristin Lavall, I look, I got a phone call, and I'm just going to be honest in saying that, the reason Kristin has got such animosity toward the Select Board, and it's me, is because of Dorianne not being appointed to CPC. Well, Kristin, I got the phone call, okay? You can, you can disagree with it, you're going to have a chance to talk, but I'm going to talk first this time. So, Ben, I appreciate what you're saying, that as far as you and dealing with Kristin, she does a really great job, and I'm sure she does, but with the Select Board, there is nothing that she does to support the Select Board. She opposes everything she possibly can, she, she'll go to a meeting and bring up things that aren't even on the agenda. She went to the Planning Board meeting recently for 120 Turnpike Road and started talking about the 61A property, Select Board. And she does it, there is clearly malice in her voice when she talks. She constantly comes to our meetings and raises her hand over and over and over and over, interrupts. Well, Lisa, she does, okay? So, you can look at her that way, but she does.
I just said that's her right, Kathy.
Okay. Well, not to intentionally disrupt a meeting, I mean, seriously, we are, we, we have these late meetings, there's, nobody else does that. So, I can go, I can just tick off the things that she has opposed, and I can say, "Well, Select Board, that's it, she wants that." She brings up things that she doesn't have a background in, as far as, you know, maybe ask why we don't want to support the 61A property, we have a very good reason. And it's not to, to try to avoid open space, but there's never that conversation, there's this continually malicious tone as far as the Select Board goes. So, that's what our issue is. If you had a, somebody that you appointed, and they treated you that way, would you reappoint them? So, I, it, this is a dilemma, because I want you to have your quorum, and I know this is a problem, and I don't want to cause you not to have a meeting, that's why we hope that Open Space will appoint someone which will help this. But it is really hard for me to sit here, knowing what I dealt with a few years ago with Calandra, and seeing how she, she, she acts. It's just not helpful. She is not supportive of anything the Select Board wants. I can just, okay, CPA certex, the previous version of CPC 5-0 voted to support it when Andy, Andrew Mills was Chair. You were on that committee at that point, you all voted. You, he was thrilled to death that advisory had come forward to talk about that. We talked, we had a very constructive conversation that night, we talked about what all the money could be used for, and then, yet, now, when, when it comes in front of this committee, it's zero, because of the negative things she said. She, she brought up CPC.
There was, there was more to that, that particular issue, there was much more to it than, than that, Kathy. I don't know how deeply we want, we want to go into the weeds.
I don't want to go into, I'm just saying, it's just time, if, if, if I could just find an example where something was being said, even if against it constructively, I'd feel different, but it's not constructive, and it's not, we, we've got a lot, you know, everybody brings up volunteers. Yes, we are volunteers too, and we spent a ton of time trying to do the work that we were elected to do. And working with people that seem to intentionally try to oppose what you want on purpose, for no sincere reason, is just not healthy. So, we hear you. We're going to see what everybody else says. I'm one vote, I'm not four votes, so, but that's, that's how I sincerely feel. And we're going to give Kristin a chance to reply, okay? But I just need you to know that, this is not, I'm not making this up, I can just go one, two, three, four, five, six things. I can't find anything where she has come forward and said, you know, "I support what you're doing," or "I disagree, and this is why I disagree." It's just always, whatever we support, I don't.
I, I, I strongly suspect that, that she's not disagreeing simply out of spite, but out of genuinely held personal beliefs, and I, I won't be long here. I just want to say, another thing that was, that was brought up was that, appointing about things that, that she doesn't have experience with, not, not to be snarky, but if we got rid of everybody on every board, committee, and commission in town who offered opinions on things they don't have experience with, it would be a wasteland in town government.
That's true, that's true, but that's not, that's still not the point. I sincerely believe that if I say A, she says B. The night that we had to vote for a second time to appoint Freddie to the 120 Highland Committee, it was a 3-2 vote. Marguerite and Al voted no, and the other three voted yes, right? Lisa Brascio calls me next day and says, "Don't worry, I knocked this down, Kristin sent an email to Freddie Glisby saying you voted against her as soon as that happened," which wasn't true.
What? I'd sent an email? You can't say that.
No, you called me.
This is, I cannot go there, that is not true.
It may not be true, but I got the phone call saying, I got a phone call saying, "That's what you did," and that she had, she had watched the meeting, she watched the meeting, she watched the meeting and realized I had actually voted for that, so she corrected the record, right? But it's just stuff like that, over and over and over, and I don't know what, you know, I've done specifically to cause this, because again, the Kristin that I remember from Calandra Field was a great asset to REC, could stand up there, make a case, and take all kinds...
Well, Kathy, I...
Do you want them to go first, or should I go? Do you want, I, I...
Kristin, this is our meeting, okay? I will let you talk when it's time to talk, okay? Select Board's going to talk first.
That's what you want them to go.
Okay, you can, you already, you already got that, you're already smirking, you know, you, you had your computer on back there on purpose, I assume, so you could interrupt the meeting, so anyway.
What?
This is not, it's not personal at all. We are trying to do our job, and I do not believe that Kristin is acting with us, trying to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. I believe she intentionally tries to do the opposite. Okay. All right, I've said enough.
My turn.
Sam?
Ben, my issue here is simply to try to find a way to create affordable housing. We've got money, and we've got a process that seems to be sticky as far as moving that money through. I think there is a fair amount of data that says most towns actually have a process where the warrant article for CPC housing money includes immediate transfer to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that is what I'm trying to accomplish here. And so, my hope is that we find people on the CPC who believe that is consistent with the intent for state law, which I think is pretty clear from folks I've talked with, is to move that money and create housing projects through a mechanism that can operate quickly to respond to pressures in the real estate market, as opposed to the usual town meeting process that limits your ability to do those transactions. So, my hope is that we can find a way to make that happen, and ideally begin to make some of those changes by the Fall Town Meeting, and work together to have an approach that will allow us to use that money in productive ways.
The reason the law was passed that enables Affordable House Trust was to allow the money to be in a place where it could be acted on quickly. You don't do real estate deals and say to someone, "Well, we got to wait 18 months for a town meeting," then hope that it gets approved, you just won't get things that way. So, you understand that piece of it.
Understood.
So, we don't, I don't care where it is, just so that it's in a place that makes sense and is effectively used and quickly usable when something comes up that we need to, to act quickly on.
Yeah, I, so I've, I've, I've reached out to and spoken with, it may well, at this point, be, be every, every member of the Select Board. Sam, I don't know if you would, actually, no, I think one day at the transfer station, we had a long chat about this, so I think it's, it's every single member. First, I, I don't believe that it's the majority of CPA communities who automatically transfer the funds over, in having looked at it, the communities who do that, they didn't start off that way from day one with, with having adopted CPA. They have established an affordable, an affordable housing program in town that has a track record, to the point where in transferring funds over, the, the, the Community Preservation Committee understands what the funds will be used for and how, because there's been a track record established. Now, in, in speaking with, with all of you, I, I've tried, I, I believe there is a way to structure an application that will, that will get the money in the hands of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee, and provide some indication of what the funds are going to be used for. And what I've spoken with, I think, I think with each of you at this point, is that at least some kind of strategy, you know? First, the CPC has never recommended a warrant article to the town meeting that, that wasn't the subject of an application to, to CPC, a formal application. And we're, you know, I am willing to sit down and work, work with anybody who would like to, to put an application together. I think an application can be put together that lays out a strategy, for instance, I, I'm just going to throw one out there, I'm not saying it's the best strategy, but, but the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee is seeking these funds to have on hand for the purchase of a, a multifamily property to turn the, the units into for-sale affordable units. Some, something along those lines, something that gives some, some kind of indication of what the funds are going to be used for, and that allows for some measure of community input when this comes before Community Preservation Committee, because otherwise, if the funds were, are simply transferred over to Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee with no discussion at all, that the town simply doesn't have any avenue for, for, for public input. I think we've, we've learned through, through recent projects, we as a town, that, that not allowing public, public input, even if the public input, you know, even if people don't get their way, just having had their say, if that's not allowed, boy, does it, boy, can it blow up. So, Sam, to, to answer your question directly, the, the committee, Al, you were kind enough to come to our, our meeting approximately five weeks ago, six weeks ago, and, and the committee was, you know, I suggested perhaps we could get something together, or talk about Fall Town Meeting, and the committee was, was very clear that, first, we don't have the time to get, to get that together, we don't have a formal application before us, and because this is frankly the second committee appointment for most of us, getting a quorum together during the summer is just about impossible. I, I don't know that we'd be able to, to work through and do it. Getting an application together for the August 31st deadline for applications, I think is imminently doable for, for annual town meeting, and I would be more than happy myself to sit down with whoever's putting the application together, and I think a successful application could be put together.
I saw that meeting, and again, I'm open to other ways to do this, but my goal is to get a way that flexibly, we have the ability to respond
Yep.
...to affordable housing opportunities that we don't have today. So,
Okay.
I'm eager to continue that conversation to find a way to do that.
Fantastic. Sam?
Thank you.
I would think that one of these other towns has got some of these things figured out, right? They're, they're going to have the same concerns that you have, as far as, I mean, there clearly is a giving up of control here. Town meetings used to approve and all, all purchases. Affordable House has a right to purchase property without going through town meeting, that's, that's just a fact. But I can't believe that one of these other towns hasn't figured out some of these things to find a way that hopefully would make more people than not happy.
Yep. And that's what I've been trying to do, Kathy, is to come up with, with some sort of compromise here that, that gives everybody most of what they're looking for. You know, the, the, the spectrum here on one end is, transfer the money over, end of story, just do it. The other end of the spectrum is, money will not be transferred over unless it's pursuant to an application to CPC laying out every single specific of the project. You know, that's, that's the other, that's the other extreme. And I don't think either, this is my opinion as one member of the committee, I don't think either of those are workable, and I do think that a compromise is imminently achievable that gives everybody most of what they're looking for, and, and allows for, on the front end, some, some input from the town, some input from, from the public, before the money gets transferred over to affordable housing, but leaving flexibility in there for affordable housing to, to identify and act quickly on an appropriate project.
Okay, TBD, but I think that's an important objective to work on over the next months here.
Agreed.
Al?
So, I have two issues. I'll start with the first one, which is financial.
Yes.
I received, when I came before the Board, rather, TART lecture on fiduciary responsibilities. And I will point out that the Commission has projects that are from 2005, at least as of a couple of weeks ago, that have not been closed out.
Yep.
And you have a paid consultant, which is something most committees do not have, who's supposed to be helping you administer, and so, this is not effective financial management. You know, those projects should have been closed out years ago. You know, those projects should have been closed out years ago. And when they're closed out, then whatever balances that are available should have been returned so that they could be used for other purposes. And so I'm concerned about financial management within CPC. And I understand you're working on it. I guess...
I would love to address that, but if you've got another... You said you have two questions. I'm certainly happy to wait to...
I know that, you know, you've committed to try and get this done this summer. Please make as much progress as possible because this is not good financial management.
Can I just address that quickly, Al? I won't take up too much of the night. So we simply did not have the bandwidth during this application cycle, which ended on annual town meeting. It was a crazy application cycle. Again, won't go too deeply into the weeds in the interest of time. After town meeting, we had some time freed up. And I just want to be very clear. I'm the one who made this decision. I steered the committee towards making a priority, formalizing our application process through putting together an application handbook that lays out the process and the requirements for applying. Because that was a large... The lack of that was a large contributing factor to the fairly chaotic situation we found ourselves in, going through the late fall, through the winter, and into the early spring. And that had to be fixed, so we don't have a repeat of it. I prioritized that first, and I put that ahead of recapturing these funds. Now, bear in mind, I've been the chair since, well, it's about a year now, since Andrew Mills left. No project has failed to receive funding because these funds are still outstanding. I want to just make sure that that's absolutely understood. Everything you say is true. Those funds have been outstanding, some of them, for quite a long time. The fact that those have not been returned to the CPA Trust has not caused a project to not be funded. The reason why I told you why formalizing our application process was important, the reason I put that in front was because the committee, after our public forum a couple of weeks ago, was clear that the committee was not going to be presenting any articles to fall town meeting. So the earliest that CPA funds could be used for a new project is, I mean, they'd be acted on in the annual town meeting 2025, and those funds become available on July 1st, 2025. So formalizing the application process, putting that first, hasn't hurt the ability to recover funds and certainly hasn't endangered the funding of any projects. Now, going through the list of outstanding projects with outstanding funds, it seems like such an easy task. Just check, 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 get all these funds returned. There's an awful lot more to it than that. We have to go through each project, visit, you know, where it's a physical location, visit, make sure the obligations under the town meeting warrant article and the application have been fulfilled. We've now, working with Carla, we've got a process together. In fact, I handed Carla paperwork on my way into this room tonight for the return of $24,000 from the gonkplex pickleball courts. This summer, Freddie and I are going to be working together, doing this, visiting all these sites, going through the applications, the town meeting warrant articles, and making sure all the boxes that need to be checked have been checked. And so that at our first meeting, in this new application cycle in September, we can show up to the committee with a stack of project closeout forms to vote on.
The second thing. I'm sympathetic to, you know, you're wanting some specificity. But the Commonwealth set up the Affordable Housing Trust Fund specifically because opportunities and programs come and go at a frequency that is not something that towns and town meetings can deal with. And they have 16 specific powers and authorities. And I think that hamstringing that process is only going to slow down the process. And I'll give you some examples.
Kathy?
Okay.
Kathy, this is not on the agenda, and this is not about appointments, and this isn't about the two people that are sitting there. This should be on a different meeting, this conversation, especially about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you, Dorian.
The, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, in the last year, we're actually doing something. We have tried to buy two properties, failed both times because property is just awful expensive. We have looked at acquiring another property that would have required a town meeting vote, and we are currently investigating the possibility of a rental subsidy program. And we are in the preliminary stages of possibly acquiring a different property on a different matter. Those are varied things. We currently have just under half a million dollars. And half a million dollars doesn't buy much housing. And the process that you're talking about is going to, I think, slow our ability to do something. And so to move it back to the pace of town meeting, for better and worse. The Commonwealth has said that this is something they want done. And so the other thing I want to say is, you know, I don't want the decision to be dependent upon reconfiguring the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is... There is a fund and a committee that exists today, and it is trying to do something, which is a change from our past practices. And so I've said my piece.
The last piece here is we can't remove town meeting from the equation entirely because under the Community Preservation Act, community preservation funds have to be appropriated by town meeting. So in the reason I bring...
I understand.
I know that's a... There's a reason that I say that, which means that any article that gets proposed has to be approved by town meeting. And again, in trying to find a strategy that gives both sides most of what they want, also, I think, has a likelihood of passing town meeting. Whereas I think there will be very vocal opposition to funds transferred over without discussion, without any identification of what they're going to be used for. I think you're gonna run into some terrible headwinds at town meeting over that. And I think the committee shared my concerns on that. And another way to look at this is we're looking at the most likely way to get the funds transferred over at town meeting by having some idea of the strategy they're going to be used for. So I... But we disagree clearly.
Andrew?
Mr. Leval, what do you think about the whole affordable housing, you know, points that we...
Can I address before I get there?
I would actually...
I think there's some other things I want to address, but Marguerite hasn't spoken.
No, Andrew's gonna talk, and then...
But I'm not gonna answer his question. I'm gonna start.
Well, but I actually think that... I'll just say this, all right? I mean, what... I appreciate the support that you had for a lot of the important CPC projects that were approved at the last fall town meeting. In particular, you have the golf course irrigation system, which is something... I thought the time had come for that. So I don't disagree with what Ben said. And also my attending the CPC public forum, I was very... You have a group of people who are very engaged in what they're doing, which is good. You need some more...
Extraordinary, so frankly.
You need more people to do that. So I actually... I know that you want to talk about that, but I actually... I would prefer, if you can, just to address just the policy thing first, and then we can come back to the other piece.
Which... What's specific?
Sure, okay. Just, do you have any thoughts on what we've just been talking about, about trying to reach an appropriate balance of... Sounds like we all agree that it's just... It's a problem that we have this money which has been taxed for the purpose of community housing, and we just collectively have a problem where we have, like a... The word I want to use is bureaucratic, but another word would be political problem to work through of finding a better way to actually get some of this money moving. So for example, where do you think the balance should be in terms of, do you have a town meeting warrant article that just says automatic transfer from the CPC to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee? And then the Affordable Trusting Committee spends the money? Or you have some procedures in place, like what Ben is suggesting on an application? What are your views on this? Because you were gonna vote on this as a CPC.
The CPC, as discussed, is at length, and I fully support everything Ben said in our plans to proceed forward to look at that process. Certainly not gonna solve it tonight. One thing I do want to add about this latest thing about subsidizing one of the developers, I believe it's Paris, I don't know for sure, to offer lower rent income. My issue with that is that I know people personally in town who are facing having to leave town because they can no longer afford it, their life situation changed, they're maybe now single, they already live on the...
Could I ask you to... Could I ask Kristin to use the mic so we can hear what she's saying?
Sorry, I thought it was in there. Sorry, Marguerite.
Thank you.
So the only comment I'll make about that is I'm not quite sure where... I feel like you might be in a little narrow focus sometimes and get that money, buy some single properties. There's ideas about Northborough Road. I would really like to understand what we're doing to help the people in our town that we're forcing out.
Okay, so we really are getting a little far afield. So what Andrew wants to know...
I was gonna ask you a question.
We're trying to... So he wants to know what you really think about
And I'm telling you.
trying to get the money in one place.
She supports what Ben was suggesting. Just one point of clarification on that. What the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee talked about last Friday, this is not just a subsidy to a developer to develop a 40 by. This would be a payment in exchange for which the developer would, instead of having, I want to say, an 80% average median income eligibility, to...
80% rent?
Yes, okay. To basically make it more friendly to... You can articulate this better than I can. Basically, one of the criticisms that came up right at the planning board hearing is this isn't really affordable housing, right? Okay, so this, what I think Al is suggesting is something that would make this more affordable housing. So just want to clarify that this is not a payment to a developer just for an existing project. This would be to get something significant in return to address exactly what you're talking about.
And I'm just saying, conversation for another time, understanding how affordable housing funds can be used. I also have a great concern for people who are already low income in our community that are being forced out. Conversation's for another time, right? This is what we all agree to...
That's great. We'd love to hear those conversations. That's what we would like to hear, is that kind of substantive conversation. But it's 10:20.
Kathy, here's one of my...
I'm... You're gonna... I promise you, you're gonna get to talk, but let Marguerite say something, and then it's yours. Go ahead, Marguerite.
No, I just... I feel like we've failed miserably building any kind of housing for older people who want to stay here or people who have gotten divorced and want to continue to live in the town with their kids in the schools. And I'm not seeing that we're making much headway. I just... I'm kind of scratching my head here.
Well, I think we have groups with different opinions, and we gotta bring them together, like we've talked about. So I'm not quite sure why tonight. Marguerite, before I address things, you haven't spoken yet. Do you want to say anything about me?
No, I just... I just think that we have an affordable housing problem, and we're all pulling in six different directions and blaming it on other people. And I think we all have to kind of man up here.
All right, I think we all concur with that statement. All right, Kristin, the floor is yours.
Okay. And Kathy, I'm gonna start by saying, like, you just interrupted me several times. That's kind of a consistent pattern. You're saying I made this personal. I actually think you're making this personal. You started the conversation saying some game of telephone, that I called someone and said something. I have no idea what you're talking about. That's just not like me. I don't even know what you're talking about, to be honest with you. So it's when you get up there as a Select Board member and say things like that, you just discredited me, and I have no idea what you're talking about, and you have no evidence. The next thing I want to ask is, do you recall the discussion topics at the time I raised my voice and, in your opinion, disrespected you?
No.
I do. So started probably last October-ish with 21 Highland Street.
Kristin? Were you going to vote in a minute to appoint you or not? What I need to understand is, do you want to work with the Select Board so that we can get some things done? And if you don't want to do that, just...
I do, Kathy, but I'm allowed... You just slandered... Like, you just...
I didn't slander you.
You said that everything I do is against you, so I want to explain that, and you need to allow me the chance. My children are watching, other people in there are watching. I'd like the chance to clarify that or they leave with the impression that I'm doing everything against you. You do know me. I've been volunteering for over 10 years. Have I been different this last year? You better believe it. Because as of last October, I started seeing behaviors on this board that were concerning. We would go to... You know why I go to so many Select Board meetings? Because things would come up that weren't necessarily on the agenda. Things that would come up that people would want to be there. Highland Street, right? That kind of snuck in there unbeknownst to people. A few people picked up on it. You then agreed to form a committee, and then you, behind the doors, agreed not to form the committee. And then you agreed to do it again, but then the committee wasn't... I don't even think it's still fully staffed.
Can I just call a stop to this? It's not going anywhere. It's 10:30.
I have the right to defend myself, guys.
Can we just vote, please?
Can... No, can I just please... Something was said about me. I'm trying to be very calm, but I get the right to respond to that. So again, I have the list of issues, and I'm happy to go back and pull the recordings. Each time, I was upset, not at you, not at Mr. Dennington, about the way the conversation was going and the way the board was holding themselves. I assure you, and last week to imply that I have some personal vendetta, and that's why I'm doing all of this. I have a life, and I care about this town, and I think I've shown it for the last decade. So when the board is now taking a personal attack on me, saying it's all about you, that's disrespectful to me. Mr. Hamilton, you actually ran on a platform saying that town volunteers, almost no big decision or many small ones happens in town without the review, input, and direction of dedicated volunteer-based committees. Over the years, service in town committees has declined. I want to explore how we can better recognize and encourage the selfless service and how we can ease the administrative burden placed on these folks who generously give their time to our community. I'm not feeling that support tonight. And I can also say that over the course of the last year, there've been many public letters written to you and/or on myself for bashing volunteers, lying about volunteers, not from you, saying, quite frankly, flat-out false facts. No one on the Select Board ever stood up for any of those volunteers. So that respect is not coming back. And, you know, lastly, Mr. Dennington, like, on Election Day, you came up to me and questioned whether or not I was present at the Springtown meeting because I was an advocate for Saturdays. I don't think that was appropriate, and I had personal reasons. Actually, was on Zoom, and I had personal reasons. That was very off-putting, to be honest with you.
Can we just... Can we just, like, stop this right now? I am just out of the hospital, and I don't feel like spending two and a half hours listening to what's wrong with all of us. Can we just vote and get it over with?
So Kristin, I'm happy to talk with you offline if you want to talk further, but you've made your point. I'm not sure there's any more thing to be gained from going any further. Okay, so, excuse me?
Will the public have a chance to speak?
Not on this one. We're gonna go ahead and vote because we're...
Actually, I would like to just say one thing, Kathy. As a person that's up for appointment, and as I've been told to be calm, I will be very calm with what I have to say. Kristin nor any of us that volunteer to serve this town give up the right of free speech. She has spoken under public comment, according to the SJC decision from this, one that this town is very well aware of. Although civility, of course, is to be encouraged, it cannot be required regarding the context of what may be said in a public comment session of a governmental meeting without violating both provisions of the Massachusetts Declaration of Rights, which provide for a robust protection of public criticism of governmental action and officials, referencing Articles 16 and 19. It would be nothing short of retaliation to not appoint her based on her right of free speech regarding her view of the actions and evaluations of this board, and would set this town up for a huge potential liability. I would encourage you to create a policy, if you feel strongly enough, about your expectations of volunteers, and I would be interested in town council's opinion based on the prior litigation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I will make a motion to appoint Ben Smith and Lisa Braccio to Conservation Commission for... Excuse me. It's late. Community Preservation Committee for terms... Community Reservation Committee for terms ending 6/30/27. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Cook is yes. Marguerite?
Yes.
Okay, now I make a motion to appoint Kristen Lavaut to CPC for a term ending, she's 6/30/27, too, right? Yep, 6/30/27. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Al?
No.
Sam?
No.
Andrew?
No.
Cook is no. Marguerite?
No.
Okay, 05. Thank you.
I will still be at every meeting, don't you worry.
That's fine. That's my point. Okay, moving on, so Chairs Report. So, I've got one, two things. So, let me start off with something positive.
Yeah, so we're going to take a five-minute recess, let people clear out.
We have had a lot of public comment.
No? So, back in session, 10:05. Okay, reports, so Chairs Reports. I've got two things. My usual Near East School update. Things are progressing rapidly. I keep trying to do this so people will tune in. Near East School, the Building Committee meets very regularly now. They, we have a website that tells what's going on. We're going to have another public forum next Tuesday to try to get the public to weigh in. But we are down to three options of the 12. Nine have been eliminated, which, most of them were not realistic. So, things are moving forward very fast, and we're trying to make sure that people are appropriately informed. Okay?
Yeah. I met with the representative...
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you asking a question about that?
No, I was just...
I've got one more thing. I've just got one more thing. So, you're right, you don't even know what's on there. So, Kevin Miller wanted to make sure that we publicize. It's going to be on June 27th at 7:00 at the Community House. There's going to be a celebration of the putting these signs in that mark the Southborough Center Historic District. There are seven of them that were bought with ARPA money. They are really beautiful. Six are in. If you, Knights of Columbus is one, if you want to see one, and they look great. And so, they like to basically show support and have a celebration of the fact that we now have our historic district all...
They do look great. I've seen several of them around.
Outlined. And the seventh one is the park. And so, he's just trying to figure out where it's supposed to go, and that one will go into it. But he was very happy with Chris Leroy as far as getting those in. Okay, that's me. Go ahead, Al.
I met with the representatives from the Trustees of Reservations and had a long conversation about what it would take to get farming returned to Chestnut Hill Farm. They mentioned a couple of items that were potential road barriers, one of which was that they hold events there where they serve alcohol. And in the past, they have not been able to get a liquor license of any form. And I did suggest to them that this board might feel differently than previous boards had felt. They've had farm dinners there in the past, and that's where the money is in the food businesses. And I did review that with Town Council, and we could certainly give them a number of one-day licenses, and so I intend to follow up with them there. The second item they mentioned was the 51% requirement, where 51% of the goods that are sold at the store have to come from the farm. That's written into the CR. And again, I met with Town Council and asked about that. And that is something that we can choose not to enforce. It was his term of art, that in other words, enforcement is optional. And so, that is an area where, you know, we might have some additional flexibility. So, I'm going to follow up with them, and I would suggest that, at some point, I'm also going to follow up with the Conservation Commission because I'm now ready to go and chat with them and see if we can shape the environment so that they can bring farming back to Chestnut Hill Farm.
All right. Anybody else, members report?
Nope.
Marg?
So, just quickly to what Mr. Hamilton was saying, sorry, it's late. You know, we do have a history of issuing the one-day licenses for Chestnut Hill Farm and have done that in the past. What was happening is that they would come and ask for a dozen dates, and we would, the board would issue licenses for those dates. But then they would say, well, we don't need this date now. We don't need this date, so we're not paying for that. We're not doing this, we're not doing this. The board changed the policy that, you know, when you come in and submit your application for these, you need to pay for them, right? So, we started seeing fewer applications after that. And so, I think we're more than willing to, you know, to do that again.
As we do one-day licenses for business events, for example.
Yeah, if those are brought before us. Sorry, this board's been very receptive, I think, to the one-day licenses. But to the item that I had, and I have one extra one. So, our animal control contract, we're going to be renewing that for fiscal '26. We have a current contract with Boardman's Animal Control. I will say that I believe they do a nice job. And the reason I say I believe they do a nice job is because I see very few complaints, and I don't hear very many complaints or anything at all, and more kudos from our police department. We did a three-year contract with the possibility of two one-year extensions. We are now in the final extension, so this has been the fifth year. They have, there is no escalator in the contract, so the price they gave us now four years ago is the same price they've had. They've asked for a small increase this year. And, you know, so we're going to, we're going to be doing that. Like I said, I can't think of any contracts that really that we have that have not had an increase of four years. So, we'll be doing, we'll be putting that back out in the coming, the coming, this summer, late fall for next year. I also wanted to let the board know, there was an email that went out today, and give some kudos to Bill Kundoff, whose motorcycle is still on her screen, and also to Rep. Kate Donahue. She's been pushing to try and get some movement from CSX on some of these crossings we have in town. It's not just the one downtown, but it's also the one on Central Street. And Rep. Donahue has got some traction. Bill has been speaking with Maurice O'Connell from CSX, and they responded with a tentative timeline on the Central Street Railroad Crossing. They plan to reconstruct the entire crossing on Central Street this August, and it'll be about two to three days. Traffic will have to be detoured during that time. Small inconvenience, I think, to get that, to get that fixed.
It's under construction today, actually. I drove by there.
Well, and that was just it. He's also, Mr. O'Connell also requested a crew be dispatched improving, you know, to improve that crossing right away.
Yep, great.
So, again, really appreciate, you know, the representative pushing on this and for Bill staying on top of this and CSX being responsive. Hopefully, that level of responsiveness will trickle down to our Main Street crossing, and then, you know, we can finally say that Main Street project is, you know, is complete. So, that's all I have.
So, I did ask about Main Street. He said it's next. But of course, that was more complicated because you've got to deal with some other things there that are involved with Central Street. But that is progress. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. So, we've got A, B, C, D, E, F, G. We are not, we're removing H. We're not going to vote on amending the charge for the Tricentennial Committee. So, eliminate that one, N.I. Any holds?
No.
A.
Thank you for all your donation and your time.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you for thinking, Paul. Okay, A's held. Anything else? I'm holding C. And let's see, that's it. So, A and C, is that it?
Actually, let's hold B, too. I want to say something about that one.
Okay, all right, A, B, and C. So, Sam, go with A. Minutes.
June 4th, minutes. A few Scrivners here is line 20, Mello is M.E.L.O.
Okay.
Line 58, Director versus Direction. Line 95, CPC versus CPAC.
Okay.
Line 96, Committee versus Commission. That's it. All right.
Is that it?
That's it, yep.
Okay, so, so let's do B and C, then we'll just go back and do a while. Okay, so, B, Sam?
Labrie, again, I don't know if they do this annually, but I remember several of these. I appreciate the money from them. They are not a wealthy organization, and I think this is a significant contribution.
And they do do it regularly, so...
Appreciate what they do and their generosity with this, so I thank them.
So, see, I will do a true full pilot report in July. We're expecting to hear from Harvard, and we have a meeting with Fay coming up. So, once I get those two meetings done, then I'll do a full report. But this is the second of two payments. They give us about $105,000 a year, in some part, large part because Tony Quant asked them to do that when he sold them some property years ago, and they continue to do it. So, it's voluntary, but it is based on foregone real estate taxes for properties that were bought a few years ago. So, I just want to make that clear. Okay, that's it, I think?
Yep.
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve A as amended, the minutes?
Second.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Cook is aye. Marguerite?
Aye.
Okay, so those are approved. Okay, I will make a motion to approve the $1,000 donation from Labrie.
Second.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Cook is aye. Marguerite?
Aye.
Can I make a motion to accept the donation of $52,036 from NECC?
Second.
Al?
Aye.
Andrew, excuse me, Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Cook is aye. Marguerite?
Aye.
Okay, now the rest of them, I'll make a motion to approve D, E, F, G, and I.
Second.
Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Cook is aye. Marguerite?
Aye.
Sorry, Jim. You got approved without any discussion.
If you'd like to disagree, please step up.
Would you like to discuss it for a half an hour?
Okay, but very creative what you did there. Okay, other matters. So, these are all, as far as what's left. We're not going to do number D. We will do that one later. There's more work that needs to be done as far as that one goes. We can do A, B, C. We've already done F. No, excuse me, we've already done E. So, we've got to do A, B, A, B, C, and F. Okay, A is the annual approval of the transport station sticker fee. And now, we're going to divide this into two parts. We're not ready for, to do the regulations tonight. We've got to post those. Andrew Dennington authored a bylaw years ago that is easy to forget about. So, we're going to have to, we're going to have to postpone, sorry, Bill, the regulations, but we can at least talk about the fees and get that done because that's effective July 1st. Okay, so Bill has given us a packet, very nice packet, that shows that, he's given us three choices. No change, so we keep it at $275, and 44 seniors. He's added $5 for the non-senior, and then he's added $10 to the non-senior. The $10 is about a 3.6% increase, which is about the change in the budget for fiscal year '24 or '25, so it kind of makes sense. So, what's your pleasure as far as what to do? So, remember last year, the first year, we actually had a rate for seniors. So, that's 40 bucks. So, he's not, he's not recommending changing that, keep that at 40. He's recommending either keep the non-senior rate at $275 or go to $280 or $285.
I have an opinion.
I'm talking fast because...
Okay, I guess our sort of rule of thumb has been to try to keep the subsidy, if you will, at about $100,000.
Yeah, and why do we keep, why do we have a subsidy? Why do we need a subsidy?
Well, the theory is that some of that ought to be out of the tax base generally, but...
Yeah, because the town uses a transport station.
The bulk of it should be for the users, basically.
Yeah, but the town uses a transport station, so the town should pay for some of it, so...
And so, I would be in favor of having no change to the senior fees. And maybe, I think it was option three, bump up the non-senior fees, both of those for like 3% or 4% or whatever it was there.
And that was one of those closest to just $100,000.
And that gave us $106,000 or $3,000 or something like that.
Yep, so that's $285. Second permit's 25, senior stays at 40, and the second permit for senior is 10.
Right.
Everybody okay with that one?
Yep.
Okay. All right, Marguerite?
Sorry, what was it?
Are you okay? It looks like we're leaning toward option three, which is to raise the stickers for non-seniors $10, leave the seniors alone, leave the second sticker alone for everyone?
Yes, I think, I read it this afternoon, and I thought what Bill's recommendation was what I agreed with.
I thought Bill recommended no change.
So, Marguerite, Bill says no change.
He said no change, but you want to make a change.
And we're saying a slight change, $10. And we're saying a slight change, $10.
Well, cost of.
To keep up with inflation.
For non-seniors.
Right?
Right.
So, four members of the select board will be fine. Andrew will pay $10.
Yeah, that's right. How's it feel to be taxed?
This is not a tax, this is a user.
Fee, user fee.
This is fee. Okay, um, so I'll make a, uh, motion to approve sticker fees for fiscal year ending '25 with option three on the matrix that Mr. Kundoff supplied to us, which will increase the, um, first permit for non-senior to $285, and keep everything else the same.
Second.
Okay, all right, um, roll call vote. Al?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
I'm yes. Uh, Marguerite?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so Bill, if you're still there, we have approved, there, there you are, you're there.
Yep.
So, sorry, Bill, we went up $10.
Thank you.
Okay, so that one's done, and we'll get the regulations approved. We just have to post it because of Andrew.
Sure.
Okay, all right, next one is, um, Bill's given us a list of water fees he would also like to update, and they, uh, they include a lot of things, um, for various things that the water department does for residents, businesses in town. Um, anyone have any questions for Bill? He's, he's right here, um, as far as what he's proposing here.
I'm happy to give you a brief overview, if you'd like.
What, Bill?
I'm happy to give you a brief overview, if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, we have had standard user fees, um, that do not apply to all the users. It's really for contractors that might have a new service, or if a service call is required by our guys, they have to go shut off a service or turn on a service for a real estate transaction. There's nominal fees. It's really intended to defer our cost, our operating cost associated with each of these services. So, um, we, um, we surveyed surrounding towns, were consistent with surrounding towns. In fact, we're lower than a lot of the towns. Um, and, and the idea is to recover costs associated with non-operation of the water system. So if the guys get called out for, for, uh, a service leak, um, they have to shut off the water, they have to oversee some of the work that's being done, we're going to recover that cost as, as part of this fee schedule. We have had a fee schedule in the past, but it's been inconsistent and spotty in terms of methodology, and I want to solidify the methodology.
So, Bill, as long as we're in line with, uh, comparable communities, I think that's the right place to be. So, nothing here outstanding in terms of, uh, what others charge.
As I said, I think we're lower than surrounding towns.
Looks good to me.
Al?
Yeah, I'm good.
Andrew?
We're talking about the fees or?
Yeah, these, these fees.
Fees.
Fees, we're okay with these. These are fees.
Yeah.
So it's this set of fees right here. You okay? Yeah? Yeah?
Yes.
Marguerite, do you have any questions for Bill as far as his proposed water fees effective 7/1/24?
No.
Okay, okay, so, Sam, you want to make a motion?
Uh, move to approve the fees effective July 1st, '24, as stated in the packet.
Second.
Al?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Cook is yes. Marguerite?
Yes.
Okay, 5Z would approve those. Okay, Bill, you want to talk about next as far as the one thing you want to change now as far as the water regulations?
Yes, our, our water regulations need a significant overhaul. They're from, I think, 1975, uh, '87, sorry. Um, and they're pretty outdated. They don't touch a lot, on a lot of the items that really we need them to touch on. Um, the one thing, however, that's the outlier that I want to focus on now and change now pertains to work on private property. Since I started, I was in shock to learn that we do do work on private property on home service connections. If there's some, a resident that has a leak, the guys have historically gone out, they've repaired the leak, it's been at no cost to the customer. Um, that's not consistent with what the industry standard is. All of the surrounding towns to South Borough, and virtually all of them in the state, I would, I would venture to say, um, have a policy that they, they own up to the curb stop, the valve that shuts off the water serving the house. From that valve to the meter is owned by the customer. Um, so any repair work that, that would need to get done would then become the burden or responsibility of the customer. Um, you may, you may be aware that, um, builders put these lines in. The town does not build these service lines. We do inspect them, but we do not construct them. Um, we've, we've found largely that it's been a construction quality issue where we have leaky service connections, and, and, you know, at times these service leaks can cost tens of thousands of dollars for us to fix. Um, i- it's not a model that we should be following. Um, as an enterprise fund, we need to budget properly and predict expenses. Uh, there's no way we could predict this and incorporate this kind of expense in our operating, uh, budget. Um, so, all of that being said, it's my recommendation that I have some draft language that I presented to you in the memo that essentially takes our current language that says that the water department is responsible for repairing all service pipes one inch in diameter and less, um, up to the, to the meter. Um, we're changing that to basically say that we own up to the curb stop, and then the customer owns beyond the curb stop. Um, and, and in the recent past, uh, since I've been here, we've had probably three issues where there's been a leaky service, where we have, you know, had claims filed against the town because, you know, some of the people in town have, you know, very nice walkways, or they might have a fence, or even cabinets on the inside of the house that might get damaged as a result of a leak and, and, and our response to repairing the leak. Um, so, i- it becomes an issue for our insurance company as well. So, so my recommendation, again, is, is we terminate our responsibility up at the valve, at the edge of the property line, and then from that valve to the, to the meter is the, the customer's responsibility.
I have a comment.
We did run this, uh, language by town council, and they said it was fine.
So your plan is you just want this changed now, and then you're going to, uh, propose an overhaul of the whole water regulation itself?
That's right. That's right.
Okay, so, but this still probably falls within the rules of regulations. Um, so we're going to have to, so Bill, we'll approve this. We just can't do it tonight?
Sure.
Or we'll, we've got to post this and give people a chance to comment because of this bylaw that we have?
So, uh, this is not a reason not to do this, all right, but this is an obscure, it may seem like an obscure regulation, but I one time benefited from it in a way that maybe other people did, and just.
I have as well.
Okay, this was the issue, which was, um, I had a small rock that was, a plumber came out and looked at something and diagnosed that I had a really small rock in that, um, water service pipe, right? And he initially said, explained this rule. Most of the towns say they changed these rules decades ago, that municipalities shifted the maintenance costs onto the homeowner. You're going to have to pay a lot for this. You might not even want to do this whole project. I turned out, South Borough did do this. I called the wa- water department. The, uh, customer service, I thought was outstanding. Someone came into my house and with a pump and pumped the, you know, with a hose and with the, uh, so they did, there was a very small amount of digging.
Pumped the rock out.
Using the radar detector.
Yeah.
To find the, uh, so look, that was something that took maybe like three hours of one water employee's time was something, a huge help. I don't, um, but then again, I'm just mentioning this because there, there may be other people in town who have, that have had this experience where you kind of leave kind of feeling good a little bit about it, but that, I can understand where, Bill, we don't want to have, if there's really liability created because a builder put in a pipe of a substandard quality.
Yep.
And then we're called to fix it. I am, I understand that. I just wanted to mention this little experience that I had.
Yep, yeah.
So, so I, I do want to remind you that we do operate as an enterprise fund and not out of the tax base, so we have to be, again, solvent financially, annually, we have to have a balanced budget, and, you know, so historically, the, the, the town, the, the water department only operated under the tax base, um, and that may have been part of the logic as to how these, these service connections may have been done. Um, but, but now that we have an enterprise account, i- it becomes a little more difficult to, to sustain that.
So I, I, I actually had to have my water main replaced once in another town, and I had to pay for the, the whole thing, and, um, uh, and the town really wasn't involved other than a permit, you know, so now we're going to have private contractors do this work as opposed to town employees. Yeah, I mean, this is, I'm, I'm shocked that, it's a lovely service, but, uh, yeah, money's not.
It sounds like we're all in agreement with what he wants. We just can't approve this tonight. We've got to get this posted.
And I think, again, my, my concern is that, uh, this is a change. I think people who understand it have gotten comfortable with the service, which is understandable.
Yeah, so there might be some issue with this one.
But I think that, that posting it, publishing it is a wise thing, letting people comment, but conceptually, I think it's crazy that the town pays for other people's work, bad work, and so I think we need to get in step with the world on this one.
Okay.
The concern I had, and I've expressed it to Bill, is that, uh, you know, if I had this problem, um, I don't know who to call. I mean, I find a plumber, can a contractor, but I don't know whether they're good or not. I think it'd be very helpful if the town had a list of, of, uh, contractors who, uh, people have used to give people a head start, uh, not necessarily a recommendation guarantee or whatever, but here are some options that people in town have used. Here's some people you can call to get a, an estimate or a bid on the job, to leave people, give them some direction as opposed to leave them up in the air about who I do about it.
I had, I had two questions for you, Bill. One is, about how many times a year do you think this kind of repair happens?
I've been here, I can only speak to the time I've been here, and I've been here nearly a year. Next month, there'll be a year anniversary, and, um, they've gone out probably to a half a dozen private residences. Three of those resulted in some significant cost.
Whoa, that's a lot. My, my other question was, do you think that, um, developers would be disincentivized to do decent jobs of running water in from the street if they thought the town was going to pick up the slack later for them?
I don't know if that's their motivation. I, I don't think that's necessarily their motivation. I think they're driven by, you know, doing as good a job as they can, but also recognizing their bottom line.
They want to get it done, yeah.
Okay, so I think we've gone as far as we can deny that. We got to get this posted, then we'll vote on it, Bill. But it sounds like there is a, um, support of doing this.
Sure, great.
So, Bill, we're, we're not going to talk about the trees at '84 Main Street, and I will explain to you why. We've got to do a little bit more homework.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, um, I think you're off the hook.
Sounds good.
Thank you for staying so late.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you for staying so late.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Okay, the last topic is just review the goals that we set. Then, Marguerite, you weren't there, so you'll, you'll hear that we gave them all to you, um, to make sure that you, you did them all because you weren't there. Okay, so let's do this quickly and make sure everybody agrees that this is what we agreed to do. Let's do Mark's first. So there were four for Mark. Um, number one, the successful negotiation of the upcoming four union contracts, and we didn't define successful, but we did put that adjective in there, okay? Um, to assist us with the unpacking of the public safety staffing study when it's done, and its implementation and recommendations. Third was to oversee, um, the completion of the irrigation project for the golf course, and also continue to work on the other issues, mainly the still golf balls going into the yards across this lettuce squama. Um, and then to assist with the, continue to assist with the fire chief onboarding of Andrew Pontini. Agreed? As far as yours go? Okay, all right, so that's where Mark's for. What we did with ours is we carried forward a few from last year, then we had select board goals, and then we had individual goals, okay? So we carried forward the rec, um, evaluation process. We carried forward the, um, continued to work on the Hockbinton Water Project IMA. We carried forward the reorganization of Affordable House Trust and CHOPC, as we know. Um, and we also carried forward the, uh, you know, we started, we, we started the process of doing the DOR financial study review last year, so we're about to get the results of that, so carried that forward to be able to review that and possibly implement the recommendations. Um, and then we want to get the Highland, 21 Highland Committee kicked off and met, and meeting. So that was our carry forward goals, okay? Um, our select board goals were, um, under the category of economic development, we want to, um, do what we can to fill the vacancies on EDC. We want to determine whether to, um, add a full-time EDC coordinator. We want to continue work on trying to develop appropriate business in South Borough. Um, under finance, uh, and this was Al, we want to review our borrowing policy for the town and evaluate, um, the debt that we are about to start looking at creating, and making sure that we really understand what we're taking on here. Um, community development, we want to work on affordable housing, as we know. Reformulate the committees, start project implementation, and commit funds that the town already has. That was a big thing, is let's get these things working. Um, as far as administration operations, we wanted to streamline the stream, the select board mundane decisions. That was Al to try to, um, was tonight probably being a good example. Um, and I'll say no more. Um, set calendar to meet with most of the boards and committees, um, once annually. Um, event planning for employee and volunteer recognition, Vanessa. Um, improve communication on accomplishments and future issues we're facing. Develop state, the equivalent of state of the state, so do state of the town, um, presentation at the end of each fiscal year, and then add a select board report to the annual town meeting. So that was our collective select board goals. Then our individual goals.
Can I ask a question about one of those?
Yes.
On the EDC one, um, was it evaluate, um, full-time administrator, or find a way to make a full-time administrator?
We said determine permanent staffing for EDC coordinator, full-time or not.
I, I thought we were trying to get it done as opposed to determine.
Well, I put that on, and that's what I read tonight as far as look, as far as they want, too.
The first step that you've done is to determine.
Yeah, okay.
So it's on the list of things to consider for the fall town.
As in like determination.
Right?
Okay.
Okay, can I keep going?
Keep going.
Okay, so as far as individual goals. Um, okay, so, Andrew is to finalize the CPC application before 8:31 deadline for the historic fence railing. Okay, that's pretty light, Andrew, as far as what you're going to do there. You can check that one out pretty quick. All right, so, me, I've got to review, I've got to review the future plans for two East Main Street with Mr. Bemis, and try to see if we can get something done there that is constructive. Um, I've got to finalize the parking plan at former Fayetteville Valletal with Mr. Wyshin, and, uh, relating to the future use of Flag School. Okay? Um, Al, um, his is to try to restore, restore farming at Chestnut Hill, right? Um, Sam, continue negotiations with National Grid.
With less and less money.
Yeah, why would you negotiate? Hey, you can make a career out of that.
Yes, okay.
My money is just.
All right, um, and then future use of Tony, Tony Kwan Newton Street land, including the, um, wastewater treatment plant.
Yep.
And determine public access to the Hallerent property.
Yep.
Okay, Marguerite, um, we allocated to you, um, the analysis of repairs, restoration needed to the old burial ground. We, uh, put bylaw compliance with you, because you seemed to want to do that, and then, and I had trouble remembering the exact name of your software site. It said implement add-on to allow more robust reporting, um, and tracking of resident issues.
It's a C-click-fix.
I couldn't remember the C-click-fix, so I, I pledged it, okay? Everybody agree that? We've at least got them written down?
Yep.
Okay.
I think so.
All right, I will, um, attach these to the minutes from June 10th, and so we'll have a memorial list. Okay, I think that's it. Um, any public comment, Vanessa?
No, 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 Webb?
No? Okay, motion to adjourn.
I move the weed germ.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Al?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Marguerite?
Aye.
Marguerite, thank you for hanging in there.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, it's been so long.
I know.
Good night, everybody.
I did it. Yeah, so, we're done. Cut us off.